I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember David Fowler.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here. Okay, first item on our agenda tonight is the minutes of the April 16th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the minutes of the April 16th meeting were included in your packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review them? Are there any corrections or revisions?
They look good.
If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the minutes from the April 16th regular City Council meeting.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Sure. That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on the appointment of Jen Elrich to a new term on the Planning Commission. Mr. Blimire.
All right, thank you. Good evening. What you have in your packet tonight is a application to appoint Jenny Elrich to the Planning Commission. This will be to fill the expired term that Mr. Fowler had filled as an unexpired term. So, to be clear, this will be for a six-year appointment. That's what the terms are for Planning Commission. And that term that Mr. Fowler had expired right after he left the position, and so we are filling that term for six years tonight with this application. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about that. We're excited to have Jenny on our commission. She, obviously, you know, she worked for us for a short period of time, really understands the city, and all that we do was real instrumental in helping us when she worked for us with various Planning Commission-type activities. So, I think she comes with a good breadth of knowledge for that position, so.
I would entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Elrich to the Planning Commission.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to appoint Jenny Elrich to a new term on the Planning Commission.
Second. A motion by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next is a presentation in recognition of the first recipient of the New Business of the Month Award. Ms. Crossway.
Well, she makes her way up here to the front for her presentation. I just want to thank Sarah for all of her efforts to really promote businesses in the downtown as well as throughout the community. She's doing a really good job in going out and making herself known to the community and doing her job. So, thank you, Sarah, and I'll turn it over to you for this new program that we started in conjunction with the Fort Morgan Times and Chamber.
Thank you. So, I'm happy to announce that our first Business of the Month recipient, which is The Flower Peddler. They're located on 322 Main Street in downtown Fort Morgan. This award is in partnership, as Jeff said, with the Fort Morgan Area Chamber of Commerce, Fort Morgan Times, and the city. So, together, we would like to recognize The Flower Peddler for their valuable contributions to our local business community. We recognize the importance of small businesses and how they not only are impactful for our economy, but also the amenities that they offer our residents here. Specifically for The Flower Peddler, they have been a family-owned business for over 30 years, and they're very much a staple to the wonderful and unique stores found in our downtown corridor. Unfortunately, Diane wasn't able to come today to accept the award, but tomorrow, we will be going to her business to hand her this sandwich mark here, which she will display for a whole month. And then she will also get this award for her to hang up or display inside her store. So, we're really fortunate to have her business here in Fort Morgan, and we're excited to continue this program, and every month, we'll be announcing a new winner. So, thank you.
Sarah, do you want to hold that up for the newspaper to take?
I think we need to sign in the pic. It's super cool.
Next is a proclamation recognizing Foster Care Month. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and whereas children have a right to thrive, learn, and grow, and whereas foster parents provide the love, safety, and stability that young children need in order to overcome past traumatic experiences, in order to reach their full potential, and whereas Colorado foster parents are caring for and nurturing more than 2,000 children and foster and youth in foster care today, and whereas we must come together as a community to recognize the important role of foster parents' play in caring for children who have experienced abuse and neglect, supporting family reunification, and building strong communities. Whereas there is always a need for more foster parents in order to ensure children, especially older youth, parents with complex needs, children with complex needs, and siblings have a safe, stable home in their community, and whereas there are numerous individuals, nonprofit organizations, and public servants who are dedicated to raise awareness about the needs of children and youth in foster care, as well as individuals' invaluable contributions of foster parents. And whereas we all play a role in preventing child abuse and neglect, now therefore, I Ronald Schaver, Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, do hereby proclaim May 2019 to be Foster Care Month in Fort Morgan.
I think we should clash.
Should I say a few words?
Um, sure.
That's what you...
Yeah. It's so important, foster care in this community. We don't have enough of them, foster families. We only have about eight right now, and a lot of times, we have to place children out of county, which means they have to change their schools and their whole lives, and it only prolongs the process for them and the trauma that they face. So, we are trying to put it out there to promote foster care. It's a hard thing to recruit, but it's incredible what you can do for kids, so.
So, if someone listening are for the paper, what are the next steps if someone was interested or learning more?
Um, calling the department, asking for myself, and I would just give you the rundown of what it takes, what you need to do, and what we can do to help you too.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate what you do. Next is a proclamation recognizing National Police Week. Man, there's too many scripts up here, Tom.
You're doing good.
To recognize the National Police Week 2019, and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Police Department of Fort Morgan has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service, now therefore, I Ronald Schaver call upon all citizens of the City of Fort Morgan, and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through the 18th as Police Week in appropriate ceremonies, with appropriate ceremonies in which all our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion and their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Fort Morgan to observe May 15th, 2019 as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their life or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Flags of the United States will be flown at half-staff at all government buildings on May 15th. Therefore, be it resolved that by the virtue and the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, I formally declare May 12th through the 18th, 2019 as National Police Week in the City of Fort Morgan, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation. Jared, you want to grab this one?
I guess we're supposed to salute you.
Thank you, and all the officers for what you do for our community. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Fort Morgan. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Fort Morgan to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the understanding and importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore be it resolved, I Mayor Ron Schaver do hereby designate the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees, and recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. I witness hereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Fort Morgan to be affixed, done at the City of Fort Morgan, Colorado, this the seventh day of May, 2019. Brent or Steve?
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate what all of you and Brent and everybody in the city do for us.
Yeah, thank you very much. Brent and I both really appreciate the opportunity to have this recognized for that week, so thank you very much.
Next is a proclamation. No, we're done. Next is council acting as a liquor licensing authority and possible action on the application for a hotel/restaurant liquor license for All About the Smoke LLC at 617 Main Street. This is a public hearing before the City Council of the City of Fort Morgan, acting as a local licensing authority for the city, to determine whether the application for a hotel/restaurant liquor license malt, venous, or spirtuious liquors by All About the Smoke Barbecue LLC doing business as All About the Smoke Barbecue LLC at 617 Main Street should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the State of Colorado and the ordinances and procedures of the City of Fort Morgan. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by any interested party in order to enable the city to make findings and reach conclusions required to be made by law, state law, as to whether or not the application should be approved or denied. One of the principal questions the council will be considered with throughout this hearing relates to the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the outlet applied for, and the desires of the inhabitants of that neighborhood with respects to the license. Those persons who will be heard during this hearing are parties of interest, who are defined by state law as being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood, and owners or managers of the businesses located in the neighborhood. Council has previously set boundaries of the neighborhood for all city liquor licenses, as the entire city. Does anyone present object to the boundaries of the neighborhood? I guess I went a little too far on that one, or?
No.
Okay. Are there any disclosures from City Council members? If not, we'll proceed to the public The order of this hearing will be as follows. At the conclusion of my opening comments, the City Clerk will give a summary of the preliminary investigation completed with regards to the application. The applicants will present their case, meaning they will present testimony, exhibits, petitions, and other materials relevant to the application. Interested parties may then testify for or against the proposed application, after which the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. At the conclusion of all the testimony, the council will make its decision to approve or deny the application. All testimony will be given under oath given by the City Clerk. Any exhibits presented during the hearing will be submitted to the City Clerk to become part of the record, the count clerk's official files, and hereby admitted into the record of this hearing. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has this been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. A legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on April 15th, and was also posted on the property for at least 10 days prior to this hearing.
Next is presentation of the application. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an application for a new license. The business has been operational for a number of years, and they've been considering applying for a liquor license for some time. They ultimately submitted an application for a hotel and restaurant license on March 13th. If you recall, that license, or that application was brought before the council on March 19th, and it had been reviewed by the City Attorney, Fort Morgan Police Department, and my office deemed complete, and the council formally accepted it and set this public hearing for tonight. As I mentioned earlier, the legal notice has been posted on the property and in the newspaper, and affidavits of publication and posting are included with your packet. The primary purpose of this hearing, as you mentioned in the preamble, is to establish what they call needs and desires, the requirements of the neighborhood for such a license, and the desires of adult inhabitants. And there's no requirement to do petitions, but they're the simplest way to prove that support in the community for a license. So, that's generally what people do. The alternative would be having people come to this meeting and speak in favor or against the liquor license, and that saves a lot of, a lot of time. The applicants in this case submitted 102 signatures. Thirty-one of them had to be disallowed because the, there was no proof they resided in the city limits. They just wrote Fort Morgan for their address. But, so that leaves them with 70-some signatures. There is no minimum limit that you have to hit. We try and tell them to try and get as many as possible, but that's a pretty significant number, probably more than most. My office has not received any written or verbal comments, either for or against the license, prior to this hearing since the posting of the notice. The Police Department posted the large sign in the window of All About the Smoke, and a fingerprint and background check has been completed on the two owners who are present tonight with no findings. And there was a preliminary inspection of the license premise or proposed license premises on April 25th. So, staff recommends that the licensing authority weigh the evidence and make an objective decision on the application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for All About the Smoke Barbecue LLC at 617 Main Street. And I might add that Greg Ditter and Tara Fisher, the two owners, are present, and if you have any questions for them, I think the next thing on the script is comments by them, but if you have any questions for them, they're here.
Okay. With that, comments from the applicants?
I can't resist.
Okay, next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone who wish to speak on this issue? Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak on the issue? Seeing none, I would ask the City Clerk if you had received any oral or written comments, which you've already stated you hadn't.
No, sir.
Council discussion. Is there any questions or clarification in council on this?
Nope. We just have, well, standard, go ahead, you guys can come up, standard questions that we normally ask with all new applicants and anybody who are renewing licenses.
Excuse me, before we do that, can I swear them in? Just for the record, we need to do that.
Okay.
Can you guys raise your right hand each? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess my question, and if you can just talk a little bit about it, one of the things that we'd like to get clarification on is your training that you're going to provide for your employees that will be serving alcohol. As you know, you know, any kind of violations underage, you know, serving, over-serving, what kind of training are you doing with your employees to ensure that you?
Fortunately, or unfortunately, I don't know which one, we are the employees. We don't have any other staff besides ourselves. But, we do have classes picked out online to take out, there's an ID checkpoint class, and also server training, server seller training class.
So, if your business does grow, and you have additional servers, you'll have them go through on the job training to?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yep.
That's my question.
Only concern I had, yeah.
We ask everybody that. We're not picking on you.
Well, just so you know, we nicknamed her Bear, and first time she has to deal with a drunk, we're all going to go to jail.
Well, that's good to know.
She will handle us well.
You need to speak in that way.
Went away. Thank you.
That's all. Thanks. That was simple, painless. If there is no further discussion by council, I would entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing. I'm moved. A motion by Kevin Lindell, and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries. Council action. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You've seen the application and heard the testimony for and against. The appropriate action would be a resolution to either approve or disapprove the application.
I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for All About the Smoke LLC at 817 Main Street.
Second.
Where?
617.
617, sorry, sorry, sorry. Couldn't get it far enough away.
Who's second? Kevin. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Good luck.
Good luck, and welcome to being entered into Business of the Month. There you go. Thanks, and best of luck to you. Next is a presentation and possible action on bids for an unmarked police vehicle. Commander Sharp?
Good evening. So, tonight, I'm here for the unmarked police vehicle. I spoke to you guys a few months ago about, we had a little problem with one from last year and didn't know what we wanted to do. So, we did go back to bid, out to bid on it. We're looking to replace a vehicle. It's a 2007 Dodge Magnum with about 98,000 miles at the time of the replacement. That vehicle has some paint damage. It's also had some significant repair costs over, repair costs over the last couple of years. We received two bids. Each of those bids met the minimum requirement, and we're looking to diversify our fleet of detective vehicles rather than having four of the same ones that we, as we've had in the past. We had $44,000 earmarked for this in the budget to include the vehicle and the outfit. The invitation for bid was advertised at the City of Fort Morgan's webpage on or about April 8th, and closing was April 30th at 3:00 PM, which falls within the city's procurement policy. And we are recommending that we accept a bid from Ehrlich CDJR at Fort Morgan for $23,700 for this vehicle, which is well within budget, and including the outfit that we'll be coming back for later, would still put us well under budget. Any questions?
So, this is from Ehrlich Toyota?
It's Ehrlich CDJR Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, but yes.
CD.
Yes.
That doesn't sound familiar.
Is there anybody has any questions?
Always good to see it be a local company.
There are none, I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Ehrlich CDJR. Is that acceptable if I do an acronym?
Yeah.
In Fort Morgan, to purchase one Jeep Cherokee for $23,700.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Lisa Northrup. I have a resolution by Allison Howell, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Carry on.
Okay. The next thing I'm here for is a vehicle outfit. As I was here before, we ordered a Dodge Ram for code enforcement, as well as another vehicle for investigations. And we have, now, we received those vehicles, we received one of them, I guess the other one was actually a patrol vehicle, not an investigations vehicle. We've received one of them, and we need to get upfits on both of them. So, just so you know, when the vehicle's being upfit, the vendor may need to use a different type of equipment that was bid due to unforeseen technical or design issues. So because of that, I'm asking for an amount not to exceed. I got a bid from them, but we know it may not be exact. Again, these accounts are coming out of capital expense under PD vehicle replacement for our budget. They were set at $43,000 and $44,000 to include the vehicle and the outfit. As required by the procurement policy, the request was advertised on City of Fort Morgan's webpage on February 23rd, and bids were received, were to be received by 3:00 PM on March 28th, which does fit within the policy. And we are recommending that we accept a bid from Laws of Inglewood, Colorado, to purchase equipment and to outfit the Ford Interceptor utility for an amount not to exceed $10,500. As you can see, they bid $9,782, or $88.21. And also, a bid from Laws of Inglewood to purchase equipment and outfit the Dodge Ram for an amount not to exceed $4,000. Again, that's a little bit more than the bid, so that we can cover any excess costs. Both of those would come well within budget with the cost of the vehicle and the outfit, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't see any. I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from Laws of Inglewood, Colorado, to purchase equipment and outfit the Ford Interceptor utility for an amount not to exceed $10,500, and to accept the bid from Laws of Inglewood, Colorado, to purchase equipment and outfit the Dodge Ram for an amount not to exceed $4,000.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Doug Sasha. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation and impossible action on bids for sanitation department containers. Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Yeah, it's time to go out to bid on containers again, and Elliott Equipment came in with the lowest bid, and I recommend that we buy their containers. We got them last year, and they're a real good container, so I don't see any reason why not to go with them again.
The three, I know I ask this every time we do this, but the three-yard containers are the large ones?
Yes, yeah, they are.
Sixty of them. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Evans?
No.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Elliott Equipment for three-yard containers. Yeah, to buy sixty three-yard containers.
Second.
A resolution by Allison Howell, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
You're back again.
Yes.
Next is a presentation and possible action on bids for a refuse truck and compactor for the sanitation department.
Yeah, this is a fairly easy one, I think. We only got one bid on chassis from International, and we currently have three Internationals and two Freightliners. International's a good truck, and of course, Packmore, there's only one outfit to buy them through, so it's a single bid also. Any questions on either one of those?
We only got one bid on the chassis?
Yeah, I was shocked when they come in.
We usually get a couple.
Yeah, we just get, yeah, at least three usually, so I don't know if they weren't interested, or... It surprised me, too.
Packmore, that's pretty standard of what we have for all of our others, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, they're all the same. It's just easier to stay with the same stuff, the parts are interchangeable and all that, but...
So do we retire number 70?
We're going to do something a little different this year, that, because the trade, there's only, the trade-in from American Transportation's $17,500, and I'm just going to put the truck out to bid, because that's what those other companies do, and they get a lot more money, and I know we can probably get double what they offered. So that's, and we're still under budget regardless, so...
So you're going to put it?
Yeah.
To bid?
Yeah.
Well, let us know how that works.
Well, I know the city of, or the town of Log Lane is interested in doing their own service, so they might put out a bid on that, and then whoever else might be interested. We'll see what happens.
Give it a new life.
Yeah.
Don't have far different delivery.
No.
Any other questions from Log? I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from McCandless International in amount of $87,986 for an International 7400 truck chassis, and also accept the bid from American Transportation in the amount of $113,098 for an HLR 29 compactor.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. For a total of $201,084.
Still second. Still stands.
$84.
My offer of a second. Well, I was getting ready to slam the hammer, and I'm going to have to go look elsewhere. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and still stands second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I got a quick question for you. On our dumpster behind our house, just, I think the dumpster looks pretty good, but the plastic lids are broken. Do you ever go along and just replace those or look at them?
Yes, yeah, we can. I don't know what your address is, if you want to email it to me or whatever, we can get it taken care of for you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We got a lot of them we ought to replace. I've been shorthanded since January, so we're kind of...
Catching yourself coming and going?
Yeah, we're kind of swamped, but we'll get it done.
All righty.
One of the things that we're working on for counsel that was a concern was trash in the alley accumulation, various junk, and we've moved forward to get adequate staffing in the sanitation department, start looking at that this summer. And one of their jobs will be to also look at the lids and the, what the condition of the dumpsters are in, so that we can take note of that. And then, I know the drivers, as they go around, are supposed to take note of that, bring it back to the department, so that they can let people know it's time to get out and fix those lids. But if you have any people that complain or are concerned to you, please let us know so that we can follow up and make sure that we're taking care of those. So I appreciate the comment tonight.
Are we still going to do surveillance in troubled areas to try and catch the people that are causing the problem?
It's definitely something that we're going to be looking at in addition to cleaning it up, yes.
Super.
But as Jeff always says, if you see somebody dumping in your containers in your alley, feel free to report it to anybody in the city or call...
Yeah, or you can call 911 and dispatch the police, because it's against the law.
Yeah. Serious problem. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Next is a presentation on a proposal to start a downtown inventory program and update on changes to the summer concert series on Thursday night. Ms. Crossway.
So I'll go ahead and begin with a downtown inventory program. In your packets, you have the rules and application for that program. The downtown inventory program itself, it's a reimbursement grant program to provide businesses and property owners in the downtown corridor up to date as-built drawings of their property. So as-built drawings are defined as a set of drawings submitted by a contractor, architect, or designer that reflect all the changes and current conditions of a property. Drawings show the exact exterior and interior dimensions, geometry, and location of all the elements of work completed on a property. In the specifics of the program, it does state that the city will cover 100% of the costs for as-built drawings to be rendered, however, the maximum grant award could only be $3,000. So for example, if a building or business owner has an as-built drawing that costs $3,000, then the city would reimburse $3,000. If it costs that business or building owner $1,000, then the city would reimburse $1,000. The purpose for this program is to provide building and business owners the necessary tools to better understand the infrastructure in which they operate in, and how to strategically expand and grow within it. Since our focus is a downtown and businesses located within it, this program specifically targets that corridor and ensures that we are providing our local and regional businesses the foundation to grow with the necessary resources behind it. So I'm asking for counsel to allow me to set aside $15,000 out of my allocated budget towards this program.
So is this voluntary, that the business owners come to you if they want an as-built?
Yes, so I would go ahead and market this program as another resource that's available for the businesses in downtown, and it would be something, if they were willing to participate, they would fill out the application, and it would go through my office, and I would make sure that everything would get handled.
Who does the as-bills?
It would be a contractor of their choice or architect or designer.
And that's all it does, is the footprint of the building and any recorded upgrades to that building?
Yes, and so, part of the deal would allow us to also get a copy of that, so at the city, we also have a record of what's in downtown and the inventory there.
There is a local contractor, George Cromwell, with Epic Designs, that does this kind of work. So we do have somebody locally that can assist the businesses with this project if they want to use him, but we don't want to restrict anybody, and if they've got somebody that they would rather use to do the work. But there are, we just want a professional that does this kind of work to, so that we get a good drawing back that we pay for.
So the city would also get a copy of this drawing, so...
What's your estimate on an average cost? Is it going to be $3,000?
When I've spoken to that individual that Jeff had mentioned, he had said that typically it's about $3,000 to $5,000. So I think setting aside $15,000 and then setting that limit of $3,000 is something that a lot of the businesses or property owners can work around in getting a good as-built drawing.
So is the $15,000 total, the total budget going to give us?
It would give us, so let's say that five applicants filled out an application for this program, and each one called, cost $3,000, then that would be five applicants who would have as-built drawings on, which I think is really great. That's five people in our downtown, or five property owners or business owners that have those as-built drawings, and again, it would allow them to know how to expand on their current business.
So will this be something similar to what the sidewalk replacement is, once that pool of money that's set aside for this is utilized that year, we're done for that year?
So this $15,000 would be for this year, and then if we saw that this was a program that the community was encouraged to use, and that we saw a lot of business owners or property owners interested in utilizing it, then we would move forward with allocating a budget to it again the following year.
Will it provide them with a view of, say, what it looked like originally? Is that a possibility?
I think it depends on the contractor or the designer that they're using, and what they're willing to do within that $3,000, but typically with the as-bills, it's what's currently in there right now.
Well, I think this really addresses, earlier, well, I guess it was latter end of last year, we had a lot of community members that were concerned that we weren't focusing enough on our downtown corridor, and I think this shows a commitment to the business owners that are in that downtown corridor, that we're willing to put some skin in the game, you know, and help them, and let the contractors, let them see what some of the space that they have could be utilized for, because they may just not know, you know, what that space could be utilized for. So I think, you know, I would encourage, you know, any of our downtown corridor people to take advantage, you know, this is a good opportunity to get matching funds, you know, to help develop your business.
And one other thing we can do is, if we run out of money and there are still people that want us to do this downtown, we can come back to counsel and see if there's additional money you'd like to appropriate this year for the project. And one of the great things about having those as-bills with the city is we can use our GIS guy to also enhance our website that I know that we're working on really hard right now, where we can actually create an online inventory, so if somebody wants to know, what could I do with that building, or what's in that building that's empty downtown, they could actually go on our website and look and see what is available. And again, this isn't a match unless you go above the $3,000, so it's actually 100% we pay for it, and so it's really a great opportunity, I think, for businesses. The goal with this is to get an as-built to start. The next step, if we get five people that come in, or two people, doesn't matter how many, we just hope we get a few in this year, we want to budget next year to do some design match, to help these businesses, if they want to modify their businesses, and maybe take the upstairs and turn it into apartments, or take a part of it and turn it into an office building, that we can go in and help them pay for the design. That would be a match program, that we would pay up to a certain amount of the match to do the design, to make sure they can get a construction cost on what it would take. Because one of the big hurdles we've heard from downtown businesses is they don't know what it's going to cost to remodel the down, to remodel their building, and of course, if you spend several thousand dollars to get to a point where it's going to be way too expensive, you know, it's really discouraging. And so this is the first step in a series of steps that we want to do to encourage downtown businesses to develop unused portions of their businesses, and give them the incentives to move that forward. And most of our businesses downtown, if not all of them, are small businesses, and to expend this kind of money at the front of a project without understanding if they're going to get any return on investment, I think is hard. So this is what we're doing, is council member Northrup pointed out, we want to focus this in the downtown and help them to enhance their properties and potentially even get additional income from those properties.
So we have a print machine if we run out of money?
No, we don't. We don't have a print machine. But that's why we have reserves. I know a lot of people complain that we have reserves, but we've saved money that other people printed, so that's a good thing.
Mr. Wilson? Oh, sorry. For the resolution language, it asks us to approve the downtown inventory program, but I felt like we already did that. Do we need to include that in the language, or just approve the expenditure?
Yeah, just to allocate out of my budget.
It's over $2,000.
Okay.
So let's do the resolution, and you can give your updates, since that's not going to be part of the resolution.
Yes.
Any other questions on the inventory downtown? Seeing that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to approve the expenditure of $15,000 from the economic development budget for this exciting program.
Second. Also known as the downtown inventory program.
I have a resolution by Allison Howell, and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay.
Now your update.
So in regards to the Thursday night live event, I have partnered with several stakeholders, both internally and within the city, to create a event that brings the community together. In choosing the location for this community event, downtown seemed to be the clear choice. The downtown corridor is a priority for the city in revitalizing, and for my department specifically, it's about creating innovative and creative solutions that will increase visibility, foot traction, and sales for the businesses located within the corridor, which in turn fuels revitalization. Most of the successful downtowns throughout Colorado, such as Greeley, Fort Collins, and Denver, have reoccurring downtown events that have proven to be the catalyst for economic development. The Thursday night live event is a rebranding of the summer concert series put on every year by the rec department. I have been fortunate to work with Ty Hamer and his team in rebranding this event to extend beyond the city park to Main Street. The logistics of this event will now include closing down Main Street to vehicle traffic from Bijou Avenue to Railroad Avenue, and instead allowing for pedestrian traffic to fill the streets with various vendors set up within it. I also have worked closely with several of the large businesses on Main Street, who not only support this project, but are more than willing to participate, because they understand the long-term benefits and effects that this will have on their business. By default, having our residents walking up and down Main Street for a community event that will offer live music, food, retail, and arts and crafts vendors, along with kid entertainment and activities, will also create a spotlight for the businesses located on those blocks. They will benefit from increased foot traffic, and if they choose to participate and stay open, hopefully increase sales as well. In the coming weeks, I'll continue to communicate with the businesses located on Main Street to ensure that they understand the vision for this event and the benefits behind it. I will also continue to ensure that our I will also continue to ensure their concerns are responded to. As I continue to let the businesses I come into contact know, my door is always open and communication and collaboration is essential for this to be successful. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have regarding this event.
So, you're going to block off Main Street from Railroad to Bijou?
Yes.
And the businesses that are on there can bring their sidewalk sale type of deal to the street?
Yes, exactly. So, we've sent a letter to all the businesses located on Main Street asking them to participate by extending their physical location of their business onto Main Street and creating like a table or booth for selling or whatever it is that they may like to do. We've also asked outside vendors to come in and participate. And so far, we have close to thirty vendors already signed up for this event. So, there's a lot of excitement concerning it and I think it's really great for the community to have somewhere that they can come and hang out. Most importantly, it's creating, again, focus for our downtown corridor.
Just for everybody's information, these are going to be in conjunction with this Concert in the Park series Thursdays, correct?
Yes, so instead of calling it Concerts in the Park, we're going to go ahead and rebrand it to Thursday Night Live. And the live bands will play at the band shell and then we'll also have live music set up on Main Street so that this extends all the way from Railroad Avenue to Bijou Avenue.
And what are going to be the hours for it?
This will, the street closures will begin at four o'clock. Vendors will begin setting up around four thirty PM. Five PM, Main Street will be open to pedestrian traffic only. And then, at eight PM, the events end and then we will reopen the streets by nine PM.
Are you still going to have the concerts?
Yes, we'll still have the concerts. All the bands are already scheduled to play. And in the coming weeks or days, actually, you'll start to see the lineup for the concerts and the various events going on on Main Street advertised and marketed throughout the city.
What's the first night?
It is June sixth.
June sixth, okay.
So, we'll have it every Thursday night with the exception of Fourth of July week. And? Bobstock Week will happen, but that will be a separate event. Ours ends on August eighth.
And our last one will be National Night Out with the Police Department. And we're coming up with some special things to do for the community that evening. The whole purpose of moving this onto Main Street is also to take the place of parties in the park where we would bring people out to the park and focus on the park in hopes that they'd go downtown. I think what we've looked at here and getting some feedback from council, feedback from others in the community and working with some of the businesses downtown, that we need to get people downtown to the stores and get them on Main Street instead of in the park. And then also providing people with an opportunity to be down there and get something to eat and look around and check things out. And one of the things that we're looking at for the National Night Out and some other things that we want to do on those different nights and we may need help from council is to provide different vouchers to different vendors for kids to do, some of the kids' activities. Some of the activities that we're looking at for kids are a bouncy house on Main Street and we'll separate these out so that there's different things. And I think there's some other things that you're working on if you want to share that.
Sure, we're looking to have a petting zoo, pony rides, as Jeff mentioned, a bouncy house and other just really fun, interactive things that I think will create that community, family-friendly environment.
How do you intend to promote it?
I'm sorry?
How do you intend to promote it?
So, we've already ordered posters, which will be hung at all the businesses, not only in downtown but also throughout the city. We're ordering banners to be hung up on Main Street and Sherman Street as well. And we also have a Facebook page that's promoting this event. And every week, close, almost every day, we're putting up new posts, letting everyone know about what's going on and what's coming June sixth.
So, it's a new opportunity for us to create a sense of community in the downtown corridor and to provide the businesses down there, hopefully some more foot traffic to get people down there to look at whatever it is they're selling. So, Sarah's done an awful lot of work on this along with a lot of the staff, the police department's assisted. And I know that Public Works and everybody else has been involved with this to make it a success. And one of the things I wanted to point out is we did deliver letters to the downtown and we did that in conjunction with the Police Department's effort to promote community policing. And I think that that was received fairly well. I did hear some feedback by non-businesses that they thought that it may not have been taken very well. But, what we've heard so far is that it was taken very well by the businesses directly from them. And I don't know, Chief, if you heard anything back from your officers if it was a good experience for them.
The officer said it was very well received.
And one of the things and one of the reasons we did that was, you know, the Police Department is really focused on this community engagement and sending police officers down to get to know the individual business members, know who they work for and who they work with in promoting law enforcement in the downtown area, I think went really well.
Sounds like a great opportunity.
Any other questions?
Would you say that you're planning on hours again with that sixth date?
It will be five through eight, five PM through eight PM for the actual event. But, street closures begin at four PM and streets reopen at nine PM.
Okay.
And you said you already have thirty vendors lined up or signed up?
Yes, we have about thirty vendors who are committed.
That's all summer long?
Some of them cannot make it every Thursday, but most of them that I have on my list are committed for every Thursday.
Are some of those vendors, businesses that are already downtown that want to set up additional stuff?
So, we have a couple that are looking to set up on Main Street and their business, their physical businesses located on Main Street. So, yeah, it's really great to have their participation and their willingness to want to go ahead and drive this event forward. Save me a pony ride.
Make sure I get to pet the animals.
Yes.
That's really exciting, great work.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation on a proposal to enact a facade improvement program for the downtown area.
So, in your packets, you have the rules and application for the facade improvement program. The program itself, it's a reimbursement grant program provided to a business and/or property owner for the improvement of existing buildings throughout the city of Fort Morgan. Any application from a business and/or property owner in the downtown corridor would receive priority consideration. In the specifics of the program, the city would cover up to fifty percent of the costs with a maximum grant award of three thousand dollars. So, for example, if it costs a business or a property owner three thousand dollars to improve the exterior of their building, the city would reimburse up to fifteen hundred dollars of qualified expenses as listed in the rules and application of the program. The purpose of this program is, again, to provide businesses and property owners the necessary tools to grow and expand. In various research of examining other municipalities that have this program in place, I've seen plenty of success stories where businesses feel supported by their city government. I also believe this program will be the catalyst for existing businesses to consider improving the exterior of their property, which in turn creates attraction and visibility to Fort Morgan and a jump for local and regional businesses to consider expanding our way. I'm asking for council to set aside fifteen thousand dollars out of my allocated budget towards this program.
Do you have these funds budgeted in your current year's budget?
Yes, I would have enough to pull out of my budget, yes.
I was going to say, because I was developing.
Well, one of the things that we've done is we've also looked at our marketing budget within the economic development budget and we've cut some of our marketing costs in areas where we feel like we can get a little bit more benefit out of doing these kinds of programs. And so, we've really kind of changed up how we've done some of the marketing and taken some of those savings and implemented them with a focus to the downtown. Shifting things around, yeah.
One thing that I think is really awesome that's there included in the specifics of the program is that downtown businesses can apply for both. So, they can, if they want to do a facade project and they want to do the as-bills, they can do two in the same fiscal year. So, they don't have to choose and/or if they want to go after both. So, I think that's cool.
Yeah, exactly. We want to make it easier for the businesses here to be successful. And so, loosening the restrictions in a way that's responsible, I think, is really important.
I think you did a really nice job on this one and the previous application of being very clear with, this is what is covered and this is clearly ineligible expenses. So, you'll have people able to look at these applications and get a, you know, a good feel for, you know, what they can and can't do, which I think will help them with understanding. Because there are things that you've listed in here that some of them may not have even thought about being part of the facade improvement and I think that'll encourage people.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Crossway? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the facade improvement program and authorizing expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars from the existing economic development budget toward this program in the year 2019.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lundell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I'd just like to thank you for all the work that you put in under this. You know, you can see there's a lot of work put forward with the applications that you have for the facade improvement or for the as-is architectural survey or whatever. And contrary to some of the citizens' expressed opinion, it does look like you're really concentrating on downtown, which I know that you've already had meetings with a lot of the owners or businesses down there and everything too. And so, I'd just like to applaud you and the effort you are putting in towards downtown.
Thank you, thank you.
Next is a discussion and direction of a process for supporting and assisting Morgan Strong's effort to create a county-wide recreation district. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Your Honor. At our last meeting, we had a large group of people in support of Morgan Strong here and there was a specific request that we provide assistance. And we've got two items on the agenda. The first one is more of a discussion item to make sure that we're all on the same page of what the expectations of council are for city manager and staff as we assist Morgan Strong. So, I provided a memo with four points that we took away from the last meeting on things that we can do and plan to do to support Morgan Strong. In addition to that, in the next point, or in the next item on the agenda, we have a formal resolution that also talks about council support of Morgan Strong and what they plan to do this fall. But, the four points include provide technical support and information to Morgan Strong for the development of a service plan. I know they're in the process and they need specific information from the city on what we do with our programming, potential property availability, current facilities, future facilities, plans. And so, providing them that technical support from our staff would be one of the things that we plan to do. Share information with Morgan Strong as it relates to ongoing design and development of the city fieldhouse and that still remains one of the number one priorities for city council. One of the things that we don't want to do is to freeze things with the one project, wait for Morgan Strong to get through November and decide, you know, let the citizens decide if they want to move forward with the district. We are on this path where we want to build a fieldhouse as soon as possible. The whole point of this is that we will work with Morgan Strong and their plans and what they're looking at for the future development of a recreation center in Fort Morgan and make sure that we are expandable or attachable or complimentary to the future development that may happen when Morgan Strong goes to vote of the people. Then, we will provide a staff representative to attend Morgan Strong committee meetings to provide information and input on behalf of the city and will allow the use of city facilities for meetings and gatherings of Morgan Strong so long as they do not interfere with regularly scheduled use of facilities. So, for example, if they wanted to use this room on a first or third Tuesday night, that would not be possible because it's occupied by charter. So, but we would accommodate them and give them that space that they need. Was there any other expectations or thoughts? Is this too far, not enough? I guess what's the council's perspective?
As far as the fieldhouse, what impact does our grant have on the fieldhouse in general? I mean, we have to design it, we have, it has to be part of everything. If this passes, do we retain the fieldhouse? Does it go relinquish to Morgan Strong? And if so, how does that, does that impact our grant?
Well, as far as where things are at now, it doesn't impact our grant. We're moving forward with the design. Our grant is for the design of the building. Council will have to make that decision down the road if you want to provide the design or when we construct and they're not ready to construct this building or if they're not ready to construct this building, what you want to do. Do you want to own it or do you want to turn it over to the rec district? That would be a decision of council down the road. I don't think it has any impact on what we're doing right now with the current grant because that grant is just for the design.
But, there will be no long-term impacts on that grant?
No. Not that I'm aware of, no. I don't believe that there would be. Once we get the design ready to go, then it's up to us to build it. And I think then we build it, we can decide what we want to do with it. So, if everybody's good with that, you know, we don't necessarily need to take any action. I don't think we ask for action on that.
So, is this just assistance with it or doing any financial inclusion on this?
So, the service plan is essentially, the attorneys that are working with Morgan Strong are from Collins, Cockrell and Cole and all they do is these special district arrangements. So, the county commissioners have to approve our service plan and it kind of looks like, they said it's akin to a city charter where it just kind of says who's going to own what, who's going to do what, what facilities. When I say do what, as far as programming, who's going to be in charge or responsible for the programming? So, we want this service plan to have as much city involvement as possible. So, that's why it's so important to have city staff there as they're working through the nuts and bolts for the service plan, so.
Just trying to think of questions I'm going to get hit with outside of here.
What city staff will be representing the city?
We'll probably have Steve or Ty at those meetings or I'll be there. One of the three of us will be there at those meetings to make sure that we have coverage and we'll communicate on what's happening. And as it relates to that question, I think the mayor has a really good question about are we giving any money? And the question, at this point, we don't know. We haven't received a hard ask, if you will. I know at the last meeting and presentation, they said we'd like you to give us money. I guess just to put that out there, if for whatever reason the council decides that they want the programming to go to the, all of our recreation programs to go to the recreation district, we would also forfeit the fees that we charge for that because we're no longer providing those services. So, the district would pick up those fees and we charge, we are, if I remember right, we're somewhere around five hundred thousand to six hundred thousand dollars in fees that we collect every year for all the different programming that we provide. And so, there would be that. But also, we subsidize recreation to the tune of about five hundred thousand dollars a year. So, we would not be providing a service that would be provided by the district that would get all of the revenue that we have. And then, you know, the five hundred thousand dollars that we use to subsidize that wouldn't necessarily go to the district unless the council decided they wanted to help the district out, so.
But, that only happens if this initiative passes. My reference to expenditures or financial input is prior to leading up or before the assisting with their referendum or their vote.
Yes, it's my understanding that they have all the financing that they need to move this to the ballot and to move things forward. So, the only thing, we wouldn't be giving any monetary support or, the only support we'll be providing is technical support as they prepare to put it on the ballot. Then after that, we want to be very careful. I'm sure the attorney has an opinion on this. We don't want to run afoul of the Fair Campaign Practices Act and use any kind of city money to support something that is on the ballot, whether it's ours or in other government entities. So, you know, there'll be a point where we have to be very careful of what assistance we're providing and there may be a point where we just have to take a step back, so.
I was just getting ready to my turn.
Yeah, okay. He told me that earlier, just so.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this?
I think it's a good idea. Just have to wait and see what happens come November. Let the people decide.
It's really kind of hard to do or say much about it until we see what the results of the election is in November so we know where we're going and. so we know where, where we're going and if it's going and everything, too.
Okay. You have direction?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on supporting Morgan Strong's organization mission. Mr. Wells.
For your consideration, now is a formal resolution in support of Morgan Strong as they had requested at the last meeting. And we have all the pleasantries that we put in the beginning of these with the whereas. Purpose of the, purpose of Morgan Strong, purpose in the focus of the city, and in the end, the direction that's actually provided by the now-therefore-be-it-resolved clause specifically outlines what actions the council, what the council supports and what, some of what staff will be doing in support of this. And so we just have it here for your consideration, and if you have any questions, you know, Jeff is more than happy to answer those questions. One of the Jeffs will, right?
Mayor, I just want to add, since Jeff brought up the fair campaign practice, that Jeff brought up the Fair Campaign Practices Act. One of the options you'll have once this thing is on the ballot is to pass a resolution taking a position, a formal position of support on the matter as a ballot issue. You can't spend public money urging electors to vote for or against the issue, but an exception to that is this resolution device.
Thank you. Are other communities, Wiggins, Brush, and commissioners, are they doing?
Yeah, so Morgan Strong is working with any elected group, whether, yeah, so Hill Rose, Log Lane Village. So we're on agendas in different, you know, in the timeline, but we'll be the first if we pass this tonight. So it's really exciting.
Does anybody else have any comments or? Entertain a resolution.
I'm all over it.
She's scrolling, she's scrolling, she's scrolling.
Oh, okay, I was getting ready to slam the hammer.
Don't do it.
She's thinking it out.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to support the Morgan Strong organization's mission.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Will we, not, when I say we, I mean you. Will we be reading that out loud, that resolution out loud?
Not tonight. I have a whereas doubt.
Whereas on another night, whereas you don't have any wheres.
It's on the papers over there if you wish to read it.
And anytime that council is willing, we just had all of the results from the needs assessment, the voter survey that went out to just gauge respondents' wishes and desires for unified recreation in the county, and half the respondents were residents of the city of Fort Morgan. So I'm really certain that members of Morgan Strong's board would be happy to come and present that to council so you can kind of see what amenities that they are looking for.
And that was your, the survey?
Yeah, the survey that went out.
Did you get a lot of response back?
Our response rate was 13%, which I said was at the high end. So, yeah, there's about 8,500 registered voters in the county, and, but, yeah, it was exciting to see. Well, the responses were kind of broken up based on just the regular population distribution in the county, anyway. But, yeah, half of them are Fort Morgan. So, but, yeah. I saw the preliminary results, and it was really interesting to see what people were looking for in amenities. We know people have been talking about aquatics, but it was definitely aquatics were screaming at the top for what people wanted as their first priority. So, yeah. So we can come, the needs assessment wasn't just the survey, it included stakeholder interviews and some other, and public meetings as well. So we can set that up and have them come so you can learn more specifically. Thanks.
Excuse me, just FYI, that resolution, like all of our resolutions, will be posted on our website within a day or two. So.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Next is a presentation and possible action authorizing the mayor to execute a membership agreement with National Public Gas Agency. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to take this chance to introduce Beth Ackland. She's the director of gas services for NPGA. They're our current gas supplier, but Beth has a proposal for us to listen to tonight to talk about moving us up in our membership class, basically, with the organization. So bear with me, and I will get your PowerPoint.
Thank you. You. Thank you, Beth.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Brent, for that introduction. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me here this evening. Council members, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. Earlier this year, another staff member and I came out and met with Jeff and Brent and Tony, and they thought this was worthy of bringing the presentation to you, so I'm happy to do that. This is a great facility, by the way, and it's exciting to hear some of the things that you have going on. I'm afraid I have nothing so exciting for you tonight as some of the things that you have going on. However, as an essential service in providing your natural gas, we want to talk to you about some options in doing that and see if we can do that for you more economically. All right, I'll see how far I can reach with this. It's a little bit alphabet soup for us, we have to start out with, with the presentation. NPGA, the National Public Gas Agency, is part of a coalition of companies, all independently owned and operated, but part of the NMPP Energy family of energy companies. The first one is NMPP. Lots of acronyms to get through to start, and then we'll just sail right through the rest of this. The first one is a Nebraska Municipal Power Pool, of which you are a member. We provide utility services. MEAN, the Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska, who is your electric provider. NPGA, who I'm here representing tonight, your wholesale gas provider. And ACE, which is retail gas services only in Nebraska. All four of those are independent companies. However, we have a joint membership. We have members in common and a staff that we share together, providing lots of overlap between those and lots of expertise that we share as a staff and, of course, then with our members. All four are municipally owned and not-for-profit. We have existing relationships with you within the NMPP Energy family of companies. We've had a valued relationship with Fort Morgan and NPGA for gas supply since 1993 as a customer of NPGA. And you've been a member of what we refer to as Pool. When we say NMPP, we refer to that as Pool since 1985. You've got a Schedule M, which is a longer-term commitment with MEAN as your electric provider. And, of course, we value very much the voice that you provide on various boards of the NMPP Energy companies. There's a voice representation on MEAN and on Pool. And Jeff is actually currently chairman of our Joint Operating Committee, which oversees all four of the companies. We'll talk a little bit about what NPGA does. We are a joint action agency created in 1991, and just as the name implies, that means coming together collectively to do more than you could do individually on your own. We supply gas to member and non-member communities. Currently, Fort Morgan is a non-member or a customer of NPGA. We supply the management, we do supply management of your gas so that your staff can then focus on operating your own system. Our board is composed of reps from all of the member communities. Currently, we have 14 member municipalities. And what we do is pool all of those volumes collectively to do things individually we wouldn't be able to do on your, on your own. That financial strength and that long-term commitment also allows us other opportunities that we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. So specifically tonight, what we're looking at is converting what you currently have as a customer agreement to membership in NPGA. It does provide a lot of value, and it also gives Fort Morgan a voice on that board in order to make important decisions governing how your supply is managed. It's great timing. A couple of circumstances have come together to make this a very good time for you to consider this option, and we'll go through some of the differences between the two. We'll talk first about the structure of NPGA member fees. That's the fees that are paid as a member of the organization to manage your gas supply. By board policy, that's split 50/50. Half of that cost is based on volume. Fort Morgan would be one of the largest volume members of the organization. And half of the, of the cost is split equally among members because the board sees that there's also value that's shared equally. What that does for the higher-volume members is result in a lower cost per unit on that. One of the, a couple of reasons that it's especially great timing right now for you to come in as a member is that we have reduced ANG costs, which is the cost that you would share as a member of NPGA. Two decisions, really, got, got that ANG reduced. One of which, and you may have heard Jeff talk about that at some of your other meetings, the Joint Operating Committee approved a new allocation methodology this year that resulted in a lower cost for NPGA. So that lowered our ANG cost. The second item was the board chose to enter a prepay agreement, which also offsets your ANG cost. I'll go into that in just a little bit about what that prepay is and why that is a unique opportunity for you. That member fee, then, is reevaluated by the board at least once annually because it's set only to cover costs. And in this last fiscal year, the board, because costs were reduced, they actually voted to waive the last two months of that member fee, which is something that you would be able to participate in. So here's a comparison of the customer versus member options for you. Certainly, cost is one of the largest drivers of a decision like this, so we'll look at that comparison first. Currently, as a customer of NPGA, you have $850 a month management fee, and then you have a volumetric adder on top of that, so a 15 cent per unit fee for all of your volumes. Those two combined, your projected cost for fiscal year 1920 would be about $87,500 or an average of 13.2 cents per unit. As a member, we can offer you membership at a reduced cost compared to what you're currently paying as a customer. Currently, based on the current membership of NPGA and sharing all of those costs, again, on that 50/50 split, your monthly membership fee, or, excuse me, member fee, would be $5,122 and no volumetric adders added to that. What that does is give you a projected cost of about $61,500 versus the $87,500 that you're paying as a customer. So some nice savings there, a little over $25,000 projected for this next year, bringing your costs down to 9.3. And please, as I go along, if you have questions, I tend to just rattle on through this. So if you have questions, please feel free to stop me. A couple of the other differences between customer and membership in NPGA is the term. Your current agreement with NPGA is a one-year agreement. It's a rolling one-year agreement with a year notice prior to September 1st. As a member, it would be a three-year rolling agreement with a three-year notice. So longer commitment, that allows the organizations to do more in managing your gas supply.
What's the notice? You said with a one-year notice or a three-year notice?
So if you were to decide that you wanted to get out of the contract, it would be a one-year notice provision. Out of necessity, you know, gas supply involves long-term commitments, so that notice allows us to manage those, those forward purchases for you. Okay? So different for a member than what it would be for a customer. Okay? Another key difference is the LPP participation. LPP is our Level Purchase Plan, and we'll go into a little bit about what that means because that has been a key driver in the past. That's not included in your current customer agreement, and it is included in your membership. So what is the LPP, this Level Purchase Plan? It's a hedging program that was adopted by board policy to not beat the, the forward market, but to mitigate price spikes and to levelize your natural gas costs. When you purchase gas into the future, it's pretty difficult to beat the market, and that's not what it was designed to do. That current hedging policy, or, excuse me, the previous hedging policy was to hedge 50% of all of the participants' volumes for a rolling 12 months going forward. I'll show you a little bit about what the results of that was. Hopefully, you can all see that table, okay, because I think the table tells the story clearer than anything else can. If you look at the results of that LPP program over the last five years, that first blue line shows the difference between the cost of the hedges when they were placed and the final cost when they actually came to market per unit. So you can see, if you look back in 2015 and 2016 especially, that cost per unit was higher at that time. A large part of that is because we were in a higher-priced natural gas environment at the time, it was a higher market, especially going from '15 into '16. And then you can see in 2017, '18, and '19, those costs per unit came down considerably to roughly 2 cents in '17, 2 and 1/2 cents in 2018, and just a half cent in 2019. The bottom blue line, though, really tells what this program was designed to do in levelizing your natural gas costs. That's the cost that you had for those, those hedges in that, in that program on a per-unit basis. But if you look at the bottom line, that shows what it did for the overall price of your natural gas. You can see in 2015, it was close to $4, and then as it started coming down, 382, or, excuse me, 282 was the actual per-unit cost of the natural gas, despite the fact that that hedge cost was 37 cents. So overall, the LPP is doing what it was intended to do. If you look across those five years of rates, 279, 276, 275, it's designed to level out the price of, of what you're paying for the gas in that, in those timeframes. Okay? And then last summer, the board changed this policy. They realized that they, or felt like it was a little redundant to do it on a rolling 12-month basis because most of our members have storage, and that's kind of a natural hedge against those price spikes. So they decided to instead do it for a year out into the future, for forward months, 13 to 24, instead of the, of the near year, and they also reduced the volume in half. Questions about what that program does, what it's designed to do? We've talked with, with Jeff and, and with your consultant on that quite a bit. And that just shows you, again, on the lower right-hand corner, the, the cost for that LPP program, again, roughly 2 cents or a half cent in this last fiscal year. Going forward, we don't have any, under the new policy, we don't have any hedges that have come to market during that timeframe. Currently, that's projected to be a savings of about 2 cents on those volumes in the program. Some additional considerations for you. I talked earlier that the board entered a prepay this last summer. A prepay is a prepaid gas transaction that is, that's a, an opportunity that's available to municipalities because you're tax-exempt. And what the prepay does is take advantage of the difference, the arbitrage in the market, between taxable bonds and tax-exempt bonds. It's a very, very complicated transaction. The bottom line is a net savings for you. On the prepay that NPGA entered this last year for an initial period of five to six years, there's a 25-cent discount on all of those volumes. So that works to bring your costs down as a member. The board is also likely to consider in June an additional prepay transaction with an even bigger discount. At least, that's the way it's shaping up right now. If that happens, and Fort Morgan were to become a member of NPGA, they could also realize an additional savings of $24,000. These are, they kind of come and go in the marketplace. Right now is a great opportunity. of come and go in the marketplace. Right now is a great opportunity for municipalities to get in on this type of an agreement. What that would do then is to bring your net costs down below 6 cents per MMBtu, less than half of what you're currently paying. So just a couple more thoughts for you. What are you getting with NPGA to manage your gas? We're doing this actually for you as a customer and would certainly do the same thing for you as a member. We would do all of the forecasting, purchasing, scheduling of your natural gas. We monitor your usage, your storage. We communicate with the pipeline for you. We do all the invoicing for the pipeline. All of that is included in that member fee. Most importantly, though, it's managing your cost of gas. We've changed some things in how we're doing that. Starting last September, we started bidding your volumes on a monthly basis with several of our wholesale providers and have gotten savings over $27,000 since then for you. Over that time, $6,000 in May alone. There's opportunity in the market right now, and we're going after that on your behalf. It would also be good to have an additional member on the CIG pipeline that you're on. Currently, Trinidad is also a member of NPGA on CIG, and having the both of you on that would be a very positive thing. And certainly, one of the benefits of membership is having that voice on the NPGA board as a member that you would not have as a customer. Okay? Questions on any of that?
I forgot your first name.
I'm Beth.
Beth, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So it seems super dreamy. I like the cost savings and the reliability. What risks are there for our customers?
Like any organization, when you're a member owner, you have the risk that any owner would have in how that supply is managed, outside risk that might come to the board. But you also have a voice on that board and have a shared interest in that. The longer-term commitment is a part of what you take on versus the customer agreement, but that also gives you opportunities like those prepay discounts. Those are 30-year agreements, and so you don't get those without a longer-term commitment of that.
And for the board membership, who, so right now you sit on--
Right. That'll be part of the process that we talk about next of all the different things that we need to put into place. But we would appoint somebody to be on that board, likely Brent.
Brent's good.
You would have a representative and an alternate on the board.
That's just further down the line, once we start--
We meet four times a year in Lincoln. I think it would probably be done in conjunction with the resolution, I would assume, yeah, once the membership is approved.
So do we still use McFadden for, let's say, his poll pick on this?
He's very positive about it. We've spent a lot of time with him on the phone. I know Tony's spent a lot of time with him talking about what the upsides and downsides are. We looked at various risks, and we just think this is a good way to go at this point.
Because I know we were a member of NPGA at one point. They did the multi-year contracts, and the situation was in there. Basically, it turned out you're in for six years, three year sign-up, and five years or whatever, but then a three-year notification.
Yeah.
And that was one of the reasons that we pulled out of NPGA at that time. This was quite, goes back a ways. The levelized purchasing plan, that didn't, at one point, didn't seem to be that much of an issue, since we do have gas storage available to us, that we purchase our gas in the summertime at the lower rate, store it in the CIG field around here. So convince me why we need to do this.
The membership option or the LPP? Both?
Take what's out of both?
Yeah. Obviously, cost is a real driver in what you're doing. You're not able to take advantage of a lot of opportunity in the market when we only have a one-year commitment on the volumes. That doesn't allow you to get some of these discounts that are available, which is a huge incentive. I mean, that's a pretty good discount on your gas to be able to do that, that you just cannot get with a one-year commitment. I think a voice on the board is certainly another strong advantage in how some of these details are managed. I've had a couple of conversations with Jeff even on the Level Purchase Plan, and some ideas that Fort Morgan could bring to the table even with how that's managed and having a say in how that's done. That voice is a real key.
So going in this, we will still have control of our storage in CIG's field?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, you own that. You have a transportation contract on CIG as well as the storage agreement. NPGA serves as agent for you and manages those assets for you.
One of the things that you might recall, this last year, we had to take several trips out to the board meeting for NPGA, not because we are members, but because there were certain discussions taking place on the board to move to Kansas and to take NPGA and make them a member of a completely different service provider. And the concern, we had several concerns with that, especially given the fact that we want a consistent rate as we're growing, developing as a community. We wanted to ensure that the services that we were getting were going to remain the same and that the rates would remain stable. Very happy with NPGA, Beth and her team and what they do for us, and we really didn't know what we were going to get in moving to Kansas, and there were a lot of unknown issues. As Beth pointed out, becoming a member puts us as a seat on the board to make decisions and to influence the rest of the board on issues that affect the city of Fort Morgan. I know I was receiving phone calls, I think Tony might have received some phone calls, Brent probably received phone calls from Trinidad, the other community that is a member in Colorado, concerned about, you know, how is this going to impact us because we are the Colorado members in that group. And so they were very helpful in pushing forward our concerns as a board member at that time, and we really didn't have the same voice at the table that we would have if we became a member to avoid things, because ultimately, we had a choice. We told them, we'll give you our one-year notice, September, and then we're out, but then we have to go find somebody else to work with. In working with Tony and how he operates the gas department, things worked very well with NPGA. We didn't want to have to go looking around. We've actually looked at other options in the past, and every time we've looked at it with McFadden and just how things work out, NPGA's been our best option out there. And so we want to make that, we don't want that to get messed up. So being, having a seat at the table, I think, is very beneficial for the future of our gas department.
So is it one vote, one member, or is it based on size and volume?
No, it's one vote per member, just like it is all of our organizations. I do think the board pays a lot of deference to the higher-volume members because they know that that's necessary to make the organization work.
And I can say that when we were having those conversations, even though we weren't a member, I did make the point that if you lose our volume, you lose our purchasing power, which hurts the entire group. And so, as Beth pointed out, we, even though you may have one vote, you do carry a lot of weight when you say, hey, I'm buying, you know, this percentage of the total gas, and this is going to affect my customers. And I felt like the people on the board are very mindful of the fact that we do bring a lot to the table in paying for the costs associated with the services that we receive.
I think an example of that, in February, when we talked to the board about Fort Morgan expressing a desire to look at membership, given the current structure of how those membership fees are shared among the organization, that means every other member of NPGA is paying more. But they value Fort Morgan's membership in there enough that they're willing to do that. Just the way it's structured, that was the ultimate outcome and will be the outcome if Fort Morgan becomes a member. They will actually have the lowest per-unit cost on the board.
Good job you're getting there.
I just wanted to reiterate that what Jeff said. We, as staff, have looked at this. Myself, Tony, our consultant, we're very comfortable with this direction. I have reviewed, Ron may know, I have this gal that keeps paper files for everything, and she has a very extensive record of the back of the days when we changed our membership with NPGA. And I have gone through and read, I think, just about every page of that. And it seems to me that a lot of the issues that we had back then have been resolved and shouldn't be an issue moving forward with membership. So I definitely support this decision. That's how council wants to move.
Does anybody else have any questions?
So if you decide to move forward tonight, we have a list of things from NPGA that we need to go through specifically. We have to provide public notice of a meeting and then publish that in the paper, and we included that list in the packet. And so what we want from council tonight is direction to move forward with membership, and then we will go through the formal process, and you will see things coming back. I think we're just asking authorization for the mayor to sign things as necessary.
Is that the first initial list that's on here, the numbered list?
Yes.
That's what we need?
Yep, that's the process we'll need to go to to become a full member. But our resolution, I think, gives the mayor, or we're asking that the mayor be given authorization to sign any documents as we go through this process. Some of these documents will require the council to have a public meeting and to have these things, but if there's any signatures required in other processes, we'd ask that the mayor be authorized to sign anything that's not required to come back to the council in this process.
We don't need to set any deadlines for hearings or anything?
We'll get that all set up. We want to become a member by June so we can get in that next purchase thing. So our deadlines are going to be coming up. But I know to publish things in the paper and set the public hearings, there are specific deadlines that John has to follow. And once you authorize us to go forward, we will start that process and make sure that we get everything put in the paper when it needs to be put in the paper and--
We don't need to set those deadlines--
No.
--in the resolution.
No, just authorize us to move forward and authorize--
Another step in that process then would also be, the NPGA board meets June 13th, and then they would be formally approving that membership. But they gave that indication in February that they would be willing to do that.
No other questions? I would entertain action.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a membership agreement with the National Public Gas Agency.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrop and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your business, past, present, and future.
Thanks for driving out from Lincoln.
Next is a presentation on a recommendation from the Airport Advisory Board to increase the Fort Morgan Airport lease rates and add them to the city's schedule of fees.
All right, thank you. Yeah, what you have in your packet for this item are a couple of things for consideration. The first would be a recommendation from the Airport Advisory Board to increase the, really, at the time, the only fee we had at the airport was our exclusive lease rate fee. We've historically used this for hangar space, so when somebody builds a hangar at the airport, we own the ground, they own the building. So we essentially lease them the ground to put that hangar on. It's exclusive to them because obviously the building's exclusive to them. And so we've charged them for about 19, almost 20 years now, 10 cents a square foot per year. It's a pretty small fee for us. It doesn't generate a lot of revenue. It's just a way to keep them honest up there and have a lease agreement with them. Those lease agreements are in perpetuity as long as they own the hangar. If they transfer that, then we can get new lease agreements for the structures if they sell those to somebody else. So the advisory board looked at that in conjunction with a new fee that we just created with the advent of the skydiving business that we've had, the sport parachuting operation. We created a non-exclusive lease rate for ground that the skydivers could, you know, have access to, non-exclusively. So this would allow them to land, you know, in about a two-acre circle, recognizing that, again, it's airport property, but it's not exclusive to them. Somebody else could conceivably go out there and do something else on that ground. And we'd set that fee with the agreement with the sport parachuters at 40% of the exclusive lease rate. So they're currently paying 4 cents per square foot per year. The board looked at both of those, decided it was probably time to increase the exclusive lease rate. It'd been 19 years. That would, of course, increase the non-exclusive lease rate from 4 cents to 8 cents. And I suggested that they might consider adding this to the city's schedule of fees that we review annually. This would give them the opportunity to look at that and also you all the opportunity to review those annually and determine whether or not they should be changed. Obviously, a fee that's remained steady for 19 years is taking into account, or no account, inflation or any other costs that we have at the airport. And the board really wanted to make that clear that while this might be a doubling of fees, it's been 20 years, and we've certainly had increase in costs and maintenance and various things at the airport over 20 years. So that's why it seems like a large jump. But I can tell you that we also did look at other airports nearby and were still on the low end for exclusive and non-exclusive lease rates, when you consider some around 30 to 35 cents and some upwards of a dollar. So I think this is reasonable, fair. I think the timing is right. With the new non-exclusive lease rate, I think it's time to put it on the schedule of fees so that we can consider it every year if it needs to be changed. And that just gives us a good mechanism and an opportunity to do that. So a couple of things to think about. I think what you could address under this agenda item is, you know, recommending that we would follow the Airport Advisory Board's recommendation to change those lease fees and then to add them to the schedule of fee. The next agenda item is actually going to be a resolution to adopt the schedule of fees with a couple of changes, and this would be one of them. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
I know the board was unanimously in favor of this.
Yep.
And it has been. I think Sean Poe was still here when this was originally done. I think putting it on the schedule of fees is a good job. I commend you on that. That's a good one. So we can take a look at that and adjust that as we need.
Great, thank you.
20 years is a long time.
If there's no questions or that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept the recommendation from the Airport Advisory Board to increase the Fort Morgan Airport's lease rates and then add them to the city's schedule of fees.
Second? Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Soffeau, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Next is presentation amending the schedule of fees regarding the criminal justice records fees and the airport lease fees. Commander Crowe?
Good evening, everyone. Item for discussion is amend the police department's fees for releasing criminal justice records. Three key things on this, need to adjust the fees to fall within statutes on a certain portion of records that we're releasing. Second would be streamlining specifically traffic accident reports. We have about, you know, the high 200s of traffic accidents a year. We're charging more than really what's needed. It's literally pushprint, and it gets put out. It's just, it's people showing up, and if we're charging 50 cents or a dollar for something like that, it's just, it's more of an inconvenience than anything, honestly. And then also, need to begin charging fees consistent with search and redaction of records. And then also need to begin charging fees consistent with search and redaction of records. We don't do that a whole lot, maybe, oh, probably seven or eight times a month, but we've been charging more than what we typically do, but we've been following a different practice. I just want to put everything on paper on the fee of schedules to make it consistent, make it a little bit more logical as to what we're doing. Action required, approval of the attached resolution amending the city's schedule of fees to include the changes reflected in this memo as well as what Mr. Glamire already spoke of, the new airport ground lease fees. Any questions?
You might have said this, but I was scrolling and reading, when is this going to be official, like these changes? Is it the next round when we talk about all the schedule of fees or is it right after we approve it tonight?
I believe this is going to be an amendment to.
If no one, you approve them.
Okay, cool.
They'll be official tonight, and then you can amend them during the process of the budget.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Anyone else? I think none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution, sorry, I lost this, amending the schedule of fees regarding criminal justice record fees and airport lease fees.
Second?
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation on an ordinance to amend the municipal code concerning initiative and referendums. Jeff squared.
Well, I want to thank Jeff Wilson for putting together an ordinance that clarifies what we currently do. You know, one of the things that we're bringing this to council for tonight is to get your direction on how you would like to proceed with this. Under the state law, and I'll let Jeff kind of discuss how we, if our charter does not, and our ordinances on local issues do not specifically say what we do, then we go to the state statutes. And so we have a couple of options here. What Jeff has drafted now gives us the option to just do what we've always done, which is we refer to the state statutes. The other option would be for council to look at the state statute and decide if there's anything different that we want in our jurisdiction versus what's in the statutes moving forward. That will entail a lot of work and a lot of different discussions. But before you move forward, I wanted to say from a policy perspective, you get to decide whether you want to just do what we've always done and follow the statute or if you want to go through the statute and say, we can do better than this in Fort Morgan, so we're going to reinvent the wheel. So Jeff, I guess I'll turn it over to you to kind of hit the legal aspects versus the policy of one or the other.
Well, you captured it pretty well, Jeff. Article 20 of the Colorado Constitution, which is the home rule amendment, provides the state statutes of general application apply within a home rule city unless and until they're superseded locally on a matter of local concern. And in the area of elections, home rule cities have very broad authority. Consequently, what, oh, and the home rule charter in Fort Morgan right now covers the initiative and referendum process fairly thoroughly in terms of how you design the signature pages for an initiative and then the number of signatures you need to gather and the time within which those are gathered. What isn't included in your charter provisions are all the stuff before you start circulating, all that process. Under the state statutes, one has to get approval of a petition as to form and a determination that the matter presented is actually appropriate for initiative. Initiatives may only be used on municipal legislation, not on administrative matters. And that's a major determination that's made before a petition is circulated and one that I had to opine on here not so long ago with respect to an initiative filed with the city. It was when I did that research that I realized you guys don't have any, anything spelled out. So this ordinance would basically apprise the public of what the rules are when they want to do an initiative here in Fort Morgan. Right now, we don't give them any direction. So as Jeff said, your options are to either do nothing, adopt this ordinance, which memorializes our current practice, or again, as Jeff said, do something else and develop your own procedures locally if you want to do that.
And I think our recommendation, or at least generally recommendation, is to do what Jeff Wilson has drafted and put in here. And if that's what you'd like to do, we can move that forward for first reading at the next meeting. But I'm pretty sure the person who drafted Title 31 is pretty competent.
Title 31, Article 11?
Yeah, yeah.
Really masterful.
Master, just an amazing.
Fantastic drafter.
Yeah. So it would be, you know, adopting that, we know we're getting a very competent set of laws.
Can I get an autograph on that one?
Yeah, sure.
So essentially, it just means that we follow what this, the state does for home rule, or what they advise home rules?
What you would do is, is folks in the community would understand that the preliminary stages of an initiative in Fort Morgan are expressly subject to the state law. So they would know, they bring in a petition as to, for approval as to form. This recently happened in Fort Morgan, but only by happenstance. There was nothing really directing the petitioner to do this, they just happened to do so, which sent shivers up my spine and made me think of this ordinance, so.
So at the end of the day, it helps, so at the end of the day, it helps both citizens and city staff?
It primarily helps citizens. We on staff, legal and administrative, understand that the law that applies in this case would be Title 31, Article 11. But this makes it clear to the public what we know and what we administer in-house. Was that responsive to your question?
Yes.
Any other questions, clarification?
So you're just looking, we're just discussing.
We're just discussing, and if you'd like to move forward with this, then we'll put it on the next agenda for first reading of the ordinance.
Seems to provide another level of transparency, which is always best.
So we will move it forward then to the next meeting.
For me, yes. Yep. If there are no objections, that's what we'll do. And thanks, Jeff, for drafting that up and having it ready to go. Our interim attorneys are very Johnny on the spot, or Nina on the spot, however you want to.
Next is an update on the contract with RS&amp;H for design of the city complex.
Yes, thank you. We, and I want to thank the mayor for his assistance as well as staff. We worked with RS&amp;H, which was the winning bidder for the design project for the city campus. And we have negotiated a final contract with them. Just wanted to give you an update that they are moving forward. They will start having public meetings out here with council and the public in the next several weeks. We were able to get the scope within a range that worked for the budget. There are a couple of things that are outside that scope that we may come back and ask for a change order in the future, but at this point, we're going to move forward with what we originally put in the scope minus a few options. But it's moving forward. Steve's done a really good job in this entire process to keep it moving forward. And Steve, have I missed anything of where we're at? They're starting, aren't they?
Yeah, you didn't miss anything. They, we are actually having a kickoff meeting next Tuesday with staff, various staff, just to sort of pin down, we're going to hand them a bunch of documents. They're looking for all the previous studies and everything that we have for the Center Point Plaza subdivision and design drawings and all of the details. But that kickoff meeting is just a way to get us all in the same room, understand, you know, where we're headed and, you know, the details really, we know for sure we're taking the fieldhouse to 100% design, construction level, ready documents. Those will be, according to their schedule, delivered about the third week of March 2020. And then we could conceivably take those and look to get that constructed in 2020. The rest of the elements are lower level design. Some of them are at the very lowest level conceptual programming type design, and then some will be at the 30% design level. And we may look to take some of those to full construction level as we move through the process. But good schedule, a good team of folks, and we're excited to have them get started on that and be out in Fort Morgan next week. And then we will have some public meetings after we get through that kickoff meeting, so, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, that's just the update, yep.
Next is a budget calendar review and discussion of revenues. Mr. Wells, Ms. Kenny.
Thank you, your honor. Ms. Wells, Ms. Kenny comes up to the podium to answer any questions you might have. Just like to point out that she's done a really good job in going through, and I've reviewed them as well, and plugging in what our proposed revenues are going to be for the 2020 budget, if you can believe it, we're working on the 2020 budget now. We're really serious about it. And this is what we will match up our expenses with to try and balance. And so I'll turn it over to Jeannie to kind of hit some highlights and answer any questions that you have. But yeah, there are a lot of numbers in here.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just wanted to kind of point out kind of what I look at when I look at something someone has prepared like this to see whether it makes sense. And you normally would look at like the total numbers, the ones that are bold, and see how much they changed. And if they changed a lot, you'd go, wow, you know, what did she mess up, you know? Or maybe what is it I'm not seeing? And where you first see something like that, I think, is when you get all the way over to the capital improvements. If you look at the item on the third page, this is in your table file if you don't have it out. It's on the third page, and that's the 007 account. And you know, one of the reasons that that's not as high, if you look at the amount that was budgeted for 2019 compared to what was budgeted for 2020, you're going to see some numbers there for grants. We don't normally budget in the amounts for grants unless if we know for sure what they're going to be. So that's why we see the, that's why we see the difference there. The other thing that you're going to find on several of them, on several of them, you're going to find a transfer from other funds. And the transfer from other funds, what's that? You guys know, right?
Yes.
You do, yes. It's from the reserve. And so we don't plug in now things we need from the reserve. As we go through the budget and items change, then we will go ahead and put in transfer amounts because that, you know, makes the budget balance and it also uses some of the reserve that we have, which is sometimes an intention that we have to do. Is there any questions that you have? One of the things that you can see on the electric, I think, is kind of interesting. We only projected 88% because there's a possibility of electric rates going down quite a lot because they did go down quite a lot this year. And our rate consultant had advised they may need to. We don't know yet because we don't know about purchased power, those sorts of things. One of the other things, if you look at the water department, that's 013. I guess I should have put the departments on here because you guys aren't like inundated with numbers like I am all the time. But if you look at the 013 account, you'll see that one went up, and that's because of the plan to raise water rates probably in 2020. And then there's also an amount that the sewer went up because of the same thing. But otherwise, I think you'll find pretty much, a lot of them are really in line with the budget for this year. There is one area where it's real, real hard to predict, and that's the investment earnings. So what I did this time, which is, you know, I may know more as the year goes on, I took one half of what it was for 2017, 18, what we earned in 2018 in each one, and that ends up being a pretty good chunk of change. But we don't know that it will be, so I put one half of that for next year. So does anyone have questions?
No, because this is the first time I've seen it, so I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Mm-hmm. It could have gone out sooner.
So is that?
It was ready.
Is that investment income that is with the PFM?
Which page are you on, Ron?
Back, 013.
Oh, 013? Yeah, that looks like a large number, 110,000. But if you look at the one for the 218, 535, that was what we really earned in 2018. And so I used 50% of that because I don't really know, none of us know what's going to happen with the interest rates and with the earnings on, mostly these are earnings on bonds. So if stock goes up, usually those go down, but you know, that's about my extent of knowledge on that.
And as is usual, we're, these are all very conservative.
Yes.
Because we always budget our revenues conservative, knowing that they should come in high.
Exactly. And we're also, these are also very tentative because things like if you look at the 038 account, which is the self-insurance account, there is a, there is no way of knowing yet what the insurance company says is what we really ought to have in for premiums and that sort of thing. That will happen later, but I just kind of used a, you know, kind of a 3% increase in what we paid because that's kind of what we do. And then a 10% increase in what individuals pay. So the city departments pay 3% more, so you can see those went up. But I'm not at all sure yet, you know? And, you know, when you're really sure is when you have the audit and the year's over, so.
Can we look at these again? Don't we look at revenues again closer to?
As part of the final budget?
As the final budget.
Yep, because we'll.
When you're a little more.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
So when we present the final budget, you'll see, we'll bring in a balanced budget, and we'll show you how it balances with what the projected numbers are. In some communities, what they'll do is they'll estimate high and try and bring it in. We're very conservative, that's why we have reserves. We bring in our numbers in a very reasonable amount so that when we match up our budget expenses, we're not going over budget.
Thank you for your hard work on this.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any other questions for Jeff or Jeannie on this?
Thanks, Jeannie.
Next is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda.
Just right by the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sergeant Kevin Campbell of the Fort Morgan Police Department. I am a city resident. I have served the people of Morgan County since 2009 and the people of the city of Fort Morgan since 2015. It is an honor and a privilege to be in the service of others. Before I begin, I want to make the following perfectly clear. The leadership and the officers of the Fort Morgan Police Department are committed to our service to the people 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and no matter what, we will be here to serve the citizens. It's nice to see mayor and council here tonight, but I actually have my address to city manager Jeffrey Wells. Good evening, sir. I and the other officers are here tonight to address a grievance, even though we have a concern about possible consequences for being here. We have a clear problem with our pay. We currently work a 28-day pay period with 170 hours scheduled. We submit time sheets every two weeks with 85 hours scheduled. Once an officer has worked beyond 170 hours, they earn overtime pay. We are provided Personnel Action Forms, or PAFs, by the city that lists both annual pay and hourly pay. And for the past 20 years or so, officers have noticed that our actual pay does not reflect our stated hourly rate. That is because our hourly rate is computed by an annual pay divided by 2,080 hours. However, we actually work 2,210 hours, that's the total hours worked in a given year. Therefore, we are not paid, but we are told we are paid, and this leads to one of two conclusions. This practice has been in place for at least twenty years, and officers have brought it up repeatedly, off and on, over the years. This practice is confusing, and it's not right. However, I am not the least bit interested in assigning blame or fault. It is our understanding that a legal review request was sent to the city of Fort Morgan Attorney's Office by the police department regarding FLSA concerns in October of two thousand eighteen, but no response was ever received by the, by the department from the city regarding FLSA concerns. On April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, the police department was notified by email that there would be an upcoming meeting regarding these issues, which consisted of a solution to this problem going forward. A brief summary of what was going to be presented to solve this issue was discussed during the department meeting on April twelfth, two thousand nineteen. On April twelfth, Detective Todd, Todd Zwetzig, pardon me, sent an email to police department members, Mr. Wells, City Treasurer Jean Kinney, and City General Accountant Chris Bostren, who all sent the original email on April eleventh. In this email, Detective Zwetzig stated that he believed this was never an intentional or malicious act, and the focus is on making it right going forward, not trying to place any blame or fault. He said what had been proposed moving forward seems fair, right, and the proper solution, which will eventually make things much easier for finance and others in the city. Detective Zwetzig then asked about a separate issue of back pay that is owed to the officers. He stated it is his belief employees would just be asking for the city to make things as right as possible regarding back pay and offer a reasonable solution to the employees. Detective Zwetzig received no response from anyone prior to the meeting, which was scheduled for April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. On April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, a meeting was held at the Fort Morgan Police Department. In attendance at this meeting were a large contingency of FMPD sworn officers, Commander Crone, as well as Mr. Wells, Chief Schultz, Associate City Attorney Nina Williams, City Treasurer Jean Kinney, and General Accounting Manager Chris Bostren. Mr. Wells, he handed out a letter to all members of the department stating what the city was going to do going forward from this point to take care of the FLSA issue. This letter was predated on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, and it was signed by you, Mr. Wells, and Chief Schultz. The letter stated that these changes would take place during the first or second pay period in two thousand nineteen. These changes included going to a two-week pay period just like all the other city employees, the only difference being that FMPD officers would, would work and be paid straight time for eighty-five hours instead of eighty due to FLSA regulations relating to law enforcement officers. This is the same information that had been presented to officers at the department meeting on April twelfth. A question of asked, a question was asked about why there would be a delay to implement these charges, as in why June. Jean Kinney and Chris Bostren said that they were in the middle of finishing a financial audit and would like to get that finished first, which would allow them to have a fresh and clean start going forward. This was a logical and reasonable answer, and there were no issues or concerns about handling things this way. Jean Kinney and Chris Bostren also discussed and agreed how these changes would things make, how these changes would make things much more efficient and easier for them, so they wouldn't have to keep payroll open until the end of the month for FMPD. Comments were also made about how payroll is doing this four-week pay period for the FMPD for a really long time, and it made their job much harder and complicated. All officers present at this meeting readily agree that what was stated in the signed letter about what was going to happen going forward in June two thousand nineteen was the correct solution and the right thing to do regarding the problem, and accepted it with no issues or reservations going forward. Officers also agreed that it would make things much easier and more efficient for the finance department. You then asked if there were any other questions or comments from the officers. The separate issue of back pay owed to the officers was brought forward by numerous officers at this time. This included concerns about not only being paid for time worked, but also any contributions that would have been made to police pension plan and lost interest. This issue began to become a point of contention between us. I made it very clear that I did not want division. I made it clear that I want it, want us all to think win-win and to have an abundance mentality. Everyone in the room agreed with this philosophy in trying to address this issue of any owed back pay. A lengthy discussion took place about the specific of rates of pay, calculation methods, what our PAF state our hourly rate of pay is, and other related details. A specific example was given by officers regarding the starting annual pay of a police officer and a starting pay of an employee at the, at the electric department, which is around fifty-one thousand per year. The finance department representatives agreed that the starting pay was the same for both jobs, as well as the fact that police officers worked eighty-five hours, but the electric department worked eighty hours every two weeks for the same pay. You told us that you could not admit fault with the city regarding this issue, and you acknowledged that we FMPD employees felt like we were owed back pay, and it was not fair. We agreed with your statements. We understood your position, and we asked for a consideration of a reasonable offer, offer from the city regarding back pay to make things as right as possible. Legal limitations of recovering two to three years of back pay were discussed, even though this is going, been going on for years. We agreed that you couldn't, that you obviously couldn't offer a specific solution at this moment without more calculations and consideration. You said you would check into the possibility of making things as right as possible regarding back pay, and that another meeting would be scheduled regarding that specific issue. We specifically discussed in detail and clarified and summarized several times that we agreed to this plan moving forward, as was stated in the signed letter from you, and that you would check into, into the possibility of back pay. We agreed, and there were no issues. By the end of the meeting, we made it clear that we accepted and very much appreciated this plan outlined in this letter, the solution going forward. We agreed that we would meet again in the near future to discuss the separate issue of the possibility of back pay. And you repeatedly told us that you support us and appreciate everything that we do. On May fourth, we learned that there was a strong possibility that the, that this agreement put forth in this letter would not be implemented in June. And we are here tonight to ask why the agreement may not be implemented in June. These changes going forward, which we accepted, still accept and very much appreciate, are a separate issue from back pay. There should be nothing in the way to implement these changes by either the first or second pay period in June. As to the other issue of back pay, we are looking forward to the meeting with you again in the very near future. Over the past year or so, much has been made of morale problems at the police department. Truly, morale problems come and go, and in the grand scheme of things, I believe that morale problems at the PD have been overblown. Through thick and thin, our officers do amazing work. I am proud to be your sergeant, and I believe it is a privilege to work here. We aspire to be the finest police department in Colorado. However, hearing that what we agreed upon may be delayed or not go forward is a massive morale problem. Contention over back pay, which is rightfully owed to us, is a massive morale problem. As a leader in this department, it is my obligation to be here and address this problem. You assured us that you appreciate us and you support, and you support us. I appreciated those statements. And, and again, there should be no sides in this issue. We are one city working towards the common goal of service to the people. There should be no losers in this issue. As Stephen Covey said, think win-win and have an abundance mentality. The communication regarding this, this change from the agreement at the April twenty-sixth meeting is a cause for concern, and I feel like we have a needlessly strained relationship. I want to get back on track and move the city forward. This needs to be accomplished because it is the right thing to do. This is not about blame. This is not about fault. We don't care who is at fault. As far as I'm concerned, no one is at fault. This is a matter of doing the right thing moving forward. I understand that was a lengthy set of remarks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, that was pretty lengthy.
I go over three minutes once in a while, too. I think it's okay.
Yeah, that's for public hearings for liquor laws. So is this the FSLA you wanted to discuss?
Yes, it is.
We didn't. They raised some really poignant concerns, I think. It shows vehemently by the presentation or the representation that we have here. Where are we at with this? And I guess, do we need to put this on an agenda item?
I, I'd leave it up to council to decide whether you want to get into employment issues or not. I'll, I'll leave that up to you.
Well, I think this comes into finance somewhat.
Well, and, and.
Doesn't it?
So where we're at with this is we're working with the police officers. Where are the, where are the commanders? I, I provided the commanders with an email and asked them to communicate that we're working on this issue, and, and I'm not going to have a dialogue with, with you right now. I guess if council wants to, they can. We do have an agreement. We do have, we are working together to get this done. Everybody's in agreement that moving forward, we're going to do something different. We're working on that. We're also working on the issue with the back pay, and right now, that's currently been, being processed by SIRS, we've submitted a claim to SIRS on that issue. That's going to take some time to figure out. Jeannie's finishing up the audit, and as we explained at the meeting, the audit is an important aspect of getting things closed out so that we can start over new. If there was a misunderstanding that this is, there's a strong possibility that this is not going forward, that was a complete miscommunication. If it was on my part, I apologize. It was on the part of the commanders, and I'll talk with the chief, and we'll figure out how we can communicate better. But in the end, we can, we're moving forward to fix this. Obviously, we're addressing the issues of liability as it relates to the city on a staff level. It's an employment issue. Chief's responsible for the employees, I'm not. Chief and I are working together on the budget issues, and I really do appreciate what the police do. And if they've taken this process as, as an affront, then I apologize. But we've tried to sit down and work with them directly, and I guess I'll leave it up to council. You can direct the chief what you want him to do with his employees, and I can work with the chief on the budget issues. I'd say we're ninety percent of the plate, way there. We're just waiting to hear back from SIRS on the issues of the FLSA back pay. Ultimately, council can do whatever they want on a budgetary item, as you pointed out.
Well, I guess I would be interested in knowing what the financial ramifications would be, addressing their concerns with.
Generally, I can tell you.
I mean, I, you, nobody here is going to work for ten hours and donate ten hours of, of your time, especially doing what these individuals do. And I'm just speaking for myself. There is no way that any one of these individuals, what they do day in and day out, donating ten hours a month out of your pay, that's pretty substantial. I mean, they're all fairly young. That extra money comes in handy for them.
Well, I guess I'm trying to.
And I'll just, whatever direction you have for me, that's where I'll go.
To me, this isn't, I mean, I guess it is technically an employment issue, but it seems like it's an operational issue as well. I mean, the city's been running like this, they said, twenty years, in which ten hours every month, and there's twenty-eight police officers or however, however many, that's, that's a lot of time that's being donated. And I guess I'm just trying to figure out how operationally this doesn't get caught. I mean, we're a big organization, but like, how does nobody catch that these, all these employees are working for free, essentially? And I guess, while it may be some individual employment issues, this is a city operational issue as a whole. As an organization, we can't just sit here and turn a blind eye and say, oh, we'll, we'll make it right, we'll make it right. Well, there, there is some ramifications for all this as a whole.
I, I agree, and I'll point out, we're not turning a blind eye. This isn't just an ignoring situation. As I pointed out, there was a, a request given in October to the city attorney that was pushed forward into my office a month and a half, two months ago, March, April. We set up a meeting and had, we had the, the attorney review it. We set up a meeting with the chief and the commanders and everybody in the room to say, what is the right way to address this problem? What's the right thing to do? The right thing to do is to split that one seventy-one in half, go eighty-five, so that they're on the same route. That works better for finance, it works better for everybody else, so we don't have to go back and determine hours worked in a twenty-eight day period versus a fourteen day period. We also looked at, what does that do to the pay when you make that adjustment that way? We grossed everything up to the benefit of the employee. That's what's proposed, that's what we're expecting to put into place in June. We're working on the audit and finishing all that up at this point. I don't anticipate that it's not going to happen in June, but what will not happen in June is the back pay and how we figure out and determine the back pay for every individual. Everybody sitting out there has a different rate of pay. Everybody out there has a different hourly amount, and to the extent that the city wants to accept that liability and move forward, I'm hoping that we have insurance coverage so that we don't have to pay that directly out of this year's budget. The hope was that we could get this done within this year's budget. The total numbers to implement phase one going forward was somewhere around eighty-six thousand dollars. So to do that, we've had some people resign, we've had some people leave. We were going to use, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, chief, I think this was the plan, unpaid pay in this year's budget to make up that difference when we make the adjustments to the pay moving forward in June. That's a done issue at this point, so long as we don't have any issues come back with SIRS and the, and we have a final audit with everything complete, so we don't have to go back. Moving forward, we're going to wait to see what SIRS says. They're going to take the time, look at all of the information, and they're going to want to make sure, as an insurance company, that they make sure that if they have a claim to pay, they're going to pay every single person what they owe them, because that's what insurance companies do.
Is that the back pay or what the?
That's the back pay issue.
That's what SIRS is looking at.
That's what SIRS is looking at. And in, in our conversations, everybody in the meeting that I went to said, we understand it's going to take some time to figure out the back pay issue. When I sent out my email on May fourth, my point was, it's going to take some time, because I didn't say at the time at the meeting, we're going to go out to SIRS. And I wanted them to know and update them on May fourth. Clearly, there was either a miscommunication on my side or a miscommunication on the commander's side as to where we're at in the process. That's where we're at in the process.
If I could just add.
Yeah.
If I could just add, that is correct. I've suggested that we look at salary savings for two thousand nineteen, apply it to this situation. I've sent an email out that I'm committed to doing our best to try and to fix this because I understand exactly the situation that's being presented. I have concerns with it. This situation has been, in effect, I think we came up with between eighteen to twenty years. And we have been working with it. Mayor, I was going to meet with you last Thursday. I was at the JAG board hearings and couldn't be in two places at once. It's on my calendar to meet with you Thursday, the sixteenth, and formally brief you on the situation. So I mean, that's, some of the delay is just scheduling, but we are moving to address this, and I understand your concerns, and, and I think we can get it addressed correctly here. But we are committed, I am committed, and I think Jeff is as well, to, to fix this. So it has not fallen on deaf ears.
And you do realize this is now your responsibilities.
Sure.
One of the things that I would like to address or bring up that was brought up early on are consequences. I want to be assured that there will be no ramifications or consequences against any of the officers within that department for coming forward and bringing this, because I don't feel that's going to be acceptable or, or appropriate under any circumstance. They have a right, they have a duty to be paid for what they're doing, and if there's a miscommunication, so be it. It happens on all levels, it happens on every level of government, but I, at no point, I don't want to see any of these officers with any sort of consequences for stepping forward. for stepping forward. None.
I absolutely agree. There's no plan for that to happen in any event.
I'd like to be kept in look with your email. It'd be nice so we don't have miscommunications.
And I've been updating council on my weekly memos.
The email you sent them, for one, I think that would be helpful.
I think that this is a significant enough problem coming forth that I really feel like we should have been informed about it.
Absolutely.
I mean, not involved, I don't care about being necessarily involved in the decision-making process, but this is one of those things that I've brought up repeatedly, that I think is one of the things that as a council member and therefore supposedly trying to supervise what's going on in this city, that I should have been informed of.
There is a substantial liability. And I think that is something that we, from my understanding, there was a, a letter sent or a request sent in October, sometime that sat on the city attorney's desk from October till whenever. Jeff had just told me yesterday, when I talked to him on a, on a different issue, that they were caught up and that that was, they got everything. Nina is a whiz bang and carries a fully loaded pen and gets things done. So that I appreciate, but an item like this being brought up, and I don't know or understand all the circumstances of it, but October, that's pretty substantial. And I guess our conversation, waiting for the governor, we should have had a little bit more conversation or, you know, information delved out at that point in time. But I think we need to really take a quick and hard look at, at this, at least adjusting where they're at. If they're working 2,210 hours, that, that's pretty, pretty substantial. And I can see where their concerns are. And if somebody doesn't pay me for something I do, I'll go, I'll collect them.
We're, we're working hard to fix it.
Right.
I don't think anybody disagrees with what was said here. I don't think anybody disagrees with the numbers.
Well, and that's what it sounded like, that the meeting that you had, 211st or 26th, and got, they got the letter of, you know, let's adjust our rate of pay, not bringing up, and I'm sure that they weren't discussing the back pay as part of an acceptance on the letter that I guess you guys both signed. So, I mean, that at a bare minimum needs to be corrected, and we really need to look, where's our liability stop? If it's gone back 20 years, how far back do we got, have to go back to rectify this situation? To me, that is a phenomenally huge liability. And, and to me, it does not, they're, they're completely in the right. I mean, if you look at their back pay, that encompasses their pension. I sat on the pension board with Todd, Steve Brown, and Steve Bosberg when he was on there. So I know that that's a significant impact on, on all the officers. So I, as I say, and I honestly mean it, I back the blue.
Well, to answer your question, the furthest we're going to have to go back is two years.
Okay.
The fact that it's been going on for 20 years is not right. That's why we made the adjustment in, in favor of the officers. And the issue really of communication is, is one, I think, at the management level. Because I can tell you, the meetings that I had with the chief and that I had with the commanders, primarily the commanders were hearing from the officers, that there was this frustration. That's why we took it serious. Let's figure it out. When we sat down and talked about the, what we do moving forward, it was my understanding that, from what I heard from the, the individuals that I was talking to at the police department, that that would be fine with the employees. When we went and met with them, they weren't fine with it. That's why we, that's why I said, I can't, I've got to go back and look and see what we can do about the back pay. It's not in the budget. Try and figure it out. I mean, obviously, this, this is a public issue, and we're going to, and we have been addressing it. Obviously, not to the liking of the, the police officers that are here tonight, and we'll continue to communicate with them and figure it out. And, and I don't think that anybody should be held accountable, as you pointed out, for coming and sharing their concerns. I'm glad that they came. And I do appreciate what you do.
I mean, consequences. I mean, it should have impacted.
I, and that's what I mean. No consequences. I completely agree.
You're not over him anymore. He is.
That's right.
Yeah, there's no plan here. There's, there's no issue to do anything negative to the officers. We've been working on this, and we're halfway there. We've got the future solved. Now we've got to figure out how to go backwards and correct it. I, I think their, their points are well taken, and it's been referred to the city attorney's office, two different attorney's offices. We've got, and that was part of the delay. We're working with finance to see how we can do this. I've offered two different solutions on going back pay on how we can fix this. We have to figure out which one is right, which one we can handle as a city. We're just waiting on some data, and we're waiting on the SIRSAA claim. And I think it's going to be addressed as quick as we can get that information. And that has been requested, both of those.
Jeff, now, correct me if I'm wrong. If the city didn't know about it, it's two years. If the city knew about it, they can go back three years. As I said, it's been, been down this road many times. You know, I apologize. I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to look it up.
I, I do. The determination between two and three years is made by a judge. The wording in, in the federal statute is, if it is determined to be egregious, it can go back.
Oh, okay.
What does that mean? It's open to interpretation.
Sure. I guess doing the right, I guess doing the right thing for your employees is probably the best thing.
Yes. Because did some, did somebody say we've lost staff over this? Did I hear that somewhere or?
No, that's where the money's coming from, is staff that has gone. So that's going to fit it into this year's budget.
Okay.
Pay attention.
That's, just want to make sure that, at the end of the day, I think we should do what's right and pay them what they're owed and what they've worked for the city, and make it as right as quick as possible. So that's my two cents. We have reserves if we have to.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I know we can't make a, a decision or give directive now. It's an item that's not on the agenda. But I do, I agree with Clint. I think that, you know, if we have to forego a menial project to meet our obligations to these individuals that provide, as do the volunteer fire department, a service to the citizens and the public safety, I think it's our, our duty and obligation to do it to the fullest extent. It's not their fault.
Right.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, do we make comments to come up about what was said, please?
Yeah, sure.
I have listened carefully to everything that was said. I would just like to make a comment and some remarks about what was said regarding a few things. The first thing is, the commanders did not know that we were going to come and do this tonight. This was of our own volition, because we felt that the communication that was sent out is, was very clear. I would like to make an offer that my understanding of what was in that email that was sent out was said that we rejected the initial proposal. That is not true in any way, shape, or form, as we described in our comments. The back pay and the issue of how we were going to fix it going forward are not Siamese twins joined together. They're related information, but they are separate. When we walked into that room, and I would encourage you to get a copy of that letter that Mr. Wells gave us, that was predated, it wasn't a proposal. It was specifically stated that we will be doing this to make this right. The time that we spent discussing those, that issue in that letter was very short, five to 10 minutes tops. And the reason it was short, because there were no concerns. We felt it was right going forward, and it worked for everybody, as Sergeant Campbell explained. However, I do take offense if what, what I was told was in that email, and I would encourage you to get that, because if, if we're talking about communication here, and you want to see whether there's an issue, I would request that you get that email, because of my understanding, it was said, we rejected the initial proposal. That is false. It is not true in any way, shape, or form, and that was, as Sergeant Campbell explained, we talked about that numerous times. We summarized it. We clarified it. But these are separate issues. We agree with this going forward. So the fact that we get an email talking about this, I believe is dishonest about what was stated tonight. When we're told that this is, that we were, we rejected that, that is flat out wrong. And I, I would encourage you to get that email to see whether there's any way you perceive that any different than we did. But I appreciate your time. We don't want to clash. We made that very clear. But when we feel that our issues aren't being heard and dealt with, then we felt we had no other choice to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Todd.
Can we get a copy of that email?
And the letter? I mean, I, I, to me, I want, I want all the information.
You'll get it all.
Okay.
You'll get it all.
I've been employed at the city since 2002. My concern that something that Jeff keeps saying is there was some kind of a miscommunication, or he keeps trying to almost like blame the commanders, this is not the commander's fault. And if, I'm worried that there's going to be some retribution against the commanders. That's what I'm concerned about. Those guys have had our backs all the time. They're really good commanders. I have no issues with what they do. And I am, when he constantly, when he keeps bringing up the commander issue, I have serious concerns that there's going to be some kind of retribution, a meeting, chewing them out, something like that, some bullying of some kind, because what they have done is completely right and above board. And that's what I'm worried about. Those guys have been great commanders. And if anything happens with them, because I've heard rumblings of some other stuff with those guys, and I don't think it's been fair, and that's my biggest concern, because those guys have been great commanders, and I don't see any reason for anything to happen to them. So that's my biggest concern right now, that nothing happens to those guys.
He has no authority on you. And as I stated earlier, I really hope there is no retribution or retaliation, because...
There's, there's not going to be any retaliation. There's not going to be anything towards the commanders. I can assure you of that. There never was anything planned for that. We are committed to fixing this. I've sent out several communications, both written or email and verbal. We are trying to fix this. This came to my attention, and we are working on it. This has been in progress for two decades with terms that, when they came to my attention in 2017, when I came here, I didn't understand how we did it. The terms in our payroll system were very confusing to me. They are not terms used in the federal statute, FLSA. I have met with finance a couple of times years, a couple of years ago, and with HR a couple of years ago, and this was brought up. I've taken it to two city attorney's offices. I've met with Jeff at least three times on it, the latest one being this morning. We are on the road to fix it, and we are on the road to make the back pay correct. And there'll be no retribution to anybody that's in this room or not in this room, in the police department, or any commanders. This is an issue that I am committed to working on to get fixed. And as Jeff said, I, we're well on our way on the first half, and on the second half going for the back pay. We've got to figure out what that amount is and see what the insurance company will do towards that. I'm sorry that there's frustration. I understand everybody's point. I really do. But I think you need to leave this, this meeting tonight with the understanding that it's not falling on deaf ears in the police department, as far as I'm concerned. We are working fast on it. Unfortunately, it came at really the worst time, when we were changing city attorneys, when other issues were happening that slowed down the process. But it is on the fast track burner right now, as fast as it can go.
Well, it sounds like it sat on Jason's desk for a couple of months. So, I mean, kudos to our Entram attorney firm. They, they have earned every penny, or they're worth every penny we...
I think we met with Nina three times now on this, trying to get the, the verbiage down. But the points are well taken, and the law is very clear on this, and we're trying to do the right thing.
And I would really like to hear if there is any retaliation for...
I would too.
... misconduct.
I would too. I don't expect anything like that's going to occur.
Just, just to make one point clear, I really appreciate Sergeant Campbell coming up and making the point that this, this was never meant to be pointing the finger at anybody. It's really to make a solution, and I appreciate that. And I know he's a great leader over in that department in the way that he's handled the situation, and I appreciate you coming up and making those statements tonight. And I also point out too, that, you know, we're not blaming the city attorney or anybody else as to why we're here. We're trying to solve the problem.
All right.
So I think, just want to make that point.
I don't think anybody's pointing any blame. Are we finished with public comments or audience participation? If so, reports by officials and staff?
I know that there are various reports by various officials and staff, and I think we'll start with the police chief.
Mayor, city council, I have some good news to report. Friday, we were awarded a justice assistance grant for $516,000 for drug enforcement, a collaborative effort between the Brush Police Department and us. This will start in January 2020. This was pursuant to your approval in January of us applying for the JAG grant. These monies will be used to hire another officer in Fort Morgan, another officer in Brush, and a part-time clerk here in Fort Morgan as well. The focus of that program will be investigating sellers of drugs in our community designed to improve our quality of life. Again, it's a, it's a four-year process. We're getting about 60% of those monies. Brush is getting approximately 40%. This was a competitive process, and we fared very well. So we're very excited to get this and get this going and improve, like I said a moment ago, our quality of life and look at some of these drug issues that have plagued our community for a while. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Excited to hear. Excited to hear that it worked out. I mean, you've talked about it previously, and it's, it'll be nice to see a collaboration between our two communities.
Yeah, we're, we're very excited about that effort. I met with the Brush, Brush Police Chief today as well, and... I met with the Brush Police Chief today as well, and Brush is the fiscal agent, and both the Brush Chief and I presented it to the JAG Board in a series of presentations, trying to convince them, and we were successful. So we're excited about that.
Good. Think it'll be a worthwhile use of funds.
Yeah, absolutely. This is a no-match grant, so that means it will not cost the city any money. We don't have to match any of this. These are federal pass-through dollars that come from the federal government.
What's the duration of the grant, if you want to refresh my-
Four years.
Memory is four years.
Four years. So it's $134,000 a year for three years, fully funded, year four is funded at 85%.
Is that our portion that we get, or is that cumulative between Brush's and ours?
Cumulative. We get about $309,000 over the life of the grant, and they get the remainder. But this will, this will allow us to focus on these specific investigations. Our intent is to not ever pull that investigator off of that assignment while we're getting the grant, it's grant dollars. So as staffing goes up and down, in the past, what has always been our Achilles' heel is staffing would go down, and we would pull somebody from investigations to go to patrol, but with these, with this grant, we won't be able to do that, which is a hidden benefit, because we'll be able to maintain those investigations. Thank you.
You know, one thing I'd point out, we're up to just over, about, or over $600,000 in grants in the police department, since the chief showed up a couple of years ago. He's definitely well worth every penny that we pay him, he's doing a great job, and I wanna thank him for his efforts to, to step things up in the department, so thanks. We do have, do you have an update? Yep, come on up. Oh yeah, this is some more good news.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. I wanted to update you on some of the things that our employees have been up to, and basically let you know that unbeknownst to the Light and Power Department, I submitted their nomination for the SIRSAA 2018 Safety Champion Award. And I just told Brent about this about an hour ago. And basically what it, we received confirmation that they have won the award from SIRSAA this year, so they will be honored at the Breckenridge SIRSAA membership meeting coming up, and that will take place in June. And basically, it recognizes their continued effort for installing the ALO, or following around the ALO people and covering things up, and being safe while they did all that last year. And that's on top of their usual repair and their maintenance and things like that, so they maintained a perfect incidents record as far as safety went, and so they're going to be recognized for that. So I thought I'd let you know about that. And the second thing is, is we received notification today that we have, we have been awarded the certificate renewal for our premium cost containment program, which allows us eligibility to receive a 5% premium reduction through Pinnacle on our workers' comp. So it's just a testament to our employees that they're staying safe, they're going the extra mile, and we're being recognized for it, so, thank you.
Good.
Well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brent.
All right, was there anybody else? That's it?
I have one.
Oh, yeah.
Another resolution?
No, a proclamation. Whereas, I received some information. Emily from Fort Morgan Tourism Board had contacted me last, beginning of last week, and had, the commissioners had got something from a company, or an information matrix. I'd sent it to, or forwarded to all of you. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it or not, but it kinda comes down to, this company is, they do film production for public television, Discovery Channels, and it's published all over the place. Lawrence Fishburne is the one who does the narration of it, it goes on to Discovery Channel, there's a lot of benefits to the city, I think it would be really beneficial to Sarah on some of the things that come out of the, the end of it, that we get, we get final say-so on it. But they wanna do, one of the things, if you'll look in the packet that I had sent you, you can see, they did one with Southwest Airlines, and it was diversity in the workforce. And it's a one-hour show that they, that goes nationwide. We had a phone conversation or a conference call with them, and they asked a bunch of questions about what makes our community unique. We talked with them, I gave them my perspective, why I've been here, what the city offers, what we are as a city, and they called today, and they wanna do it. It's, we have been chosen. It's Morgan County, but they want to starlight Fort Morgan. There is a little bit of a cost to it for some of the production crew and expenditures, it's about $250,000 program that they put together, that's not what they expect from us. I went and talked with the commissioners yesterday, since it involved them, they really have no desire for part of it. We could utilize some of the funds from the Tourism Board to help fund this, but I believe it comes up to about $23,000. And with, if you'll, you'll read through the package that I sent you, there's some real marketing benefits, they, they say they reach, on the five and six-minute portion, that they reach 60,000, or 60 million homes. The other part, they run, reaches 80 million homes nationwide. With that, they include our contact information, as it runs in Chicago or San Francisco, they will have the city of Fort Morgan's website, the contact person that would be listed in there, we have final say-so on this. But to expend the funds and the authorization, we would need to put it on, on a council approval. They're kinda wanting to fast-track it, I would like to see you guys take a look at it, put it on an agenda, or see if we had something we want to approve. They wanna, they're wanna fast-track it. They're looking at 120 days being filmed, edited, and run it through, so they've got some agreements in that that they would wanna do, so.
I got your email, and I looked over it, and it looked like a great opportunity. I think it's something we need to bring up definitely for discussion at the May-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first council meeting, for sure.
I know David had, I sent it to him, and he didn't get it, I had sent it to everybody yesterday, I missed Jeff Wells, and Jeff caught me on it this morning, so I forwarded that. I wish I would've had more time, but like I said, I had, I got this information from them Friday afternoon, and so I think it's something that we can really look at, and takes all of us to agree on, or a majority of us, and if it's something we wanna do, I think we should move forward, so. That's mine. Yeah, just let me know if you don't, if you did not receive it.
Yeah, I got it, it isn't me to make it through.
Okay. So, okay. Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before we get to that, is that direction, to put that on the agenda for next meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, and can you send me the packet, so that we'll have some information to put in the, the meeting packet about what we'll be discussing?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. The city is accepting sealed bids for the Alco Feeder Electric Distribution Line rebuild project until 3:00 PM on May 28th. That's the only bid currently out under meetings. The Airport Advisory Board is scheduled to meet at noon on May 8th, and the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet at 4:30 PM on May 13th. The Senior Center Advisory Board is scheduled to meet May 14th at 1:30 PM. The Library Advisory Board is scheduled to meet at 4:30 PM on the 20th, and the next city council regular meeting will be May 21st at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Okay. There's no other business before this council meeting, it's adjourned.